Well, your lead Jeff, whenever you want me to take over, I'm ready.
I believe we should get started, but again, I'm not in charge yet or at all.
All right. So we'll call the meeting to order. I do not have unfortunately the Eileen, do you have the the notice that we read in the beginning?
Jeff has the most recent.
Would 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 you like me to read it just for the record?
No, and if you wouldn't mind doing that, that would be perfect. Thank you.
All right, for the record, this virtual meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. Both adequate and electronic notice of this virtual meeting has been provided by way of publication in the Courier News newspaper on or about August 6, 2021. In addition, notice of this meeting posted on the door of the Borough Flemington Municipal Building, located at 38 Park Avenue and any handicapped accessible entrances there too, posted on the municipal website, provided to the municipal clerk and distributed to all persons, if any requesting copies of same. This meeting is being recorded with both audio and video and maybe rebroadcast. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times.
Okay, so let's call the roll. Mayor Driver?
Here.
Caitlin Giles McCormick?
Yeah.
Mr. Campion?
Here.
Zanglehart?
Yeah.
Mr. Dasner?
Here.
Cook?
Here.
Mr. Budney?
Here.
Ms. Giffen?
Yeah.
Mrs. Ms. Weitzman?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Levitt?
Here.
Kara Kaczynski here. Mr. Clerico?
Here.
Ms. McManus?
Here.
And Mr. Troutman, who I believe is here by way of Mr. Kennel.
That's correct. Here.
Thank you. All right, why don't we do the flag salute?
Apologies to the United States of America.
Okay, so first we have a number of oaths of office. This evening, we need to take the oaths of Mayor Driver, Mr. Campion, Ms. Giles McCormick, Ms. Weitzman, and Mr. Parker. So if all of you could please raise your right hand, we'll do everybody all at once. And then Eileen will arrange for signatures of your oath of allegiance and oath of office. So I state your name.
I, Tony Parker.
solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
True faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Faithfully, actually, personally and unjustly.
Perform all the duties of the Office of Planning Board Member.
For all the duties, a member of the planning board.
For the best of my ability.
For the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Congratulations, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so Eileen, you'll arrange with everyone for signatures.
Yes, I sent them out today. If anybody, I also have copies at the municipal building. If people would want to stop by there or if they can sign it and either mail it in or scan it and email it to me, that would be fine.
Okay, and then I can sign it after that's all done, so we have a fully executed copy.
Yes.
Great, thank you. All right, first order of business, so I don't have to do this anymore, would be nominations for Chair.
I nominate Jeff Dasna Driver.
Angleheart seconds.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, I'll call the roll, and this is for Jeff Dasna as Chair. Mayor Driver?
Yes.
Ms. McCormick?
Yeah.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Zanglehart?
Yes.
Mr. Dasner?
Sure.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Budney?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
And Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Okay, I pass the baton.
Thank you all, and I thank you for for the confidence to steer the ship a little bit again this year. Item three on our agenda is nomination for vice chairperson. Can I get a motion from the floor for that?
I nominate Susan Anglehart Cook.
Budney second.
Accept.
Sure.
You have a choice.
Are there? If you'd like.
All right, are there other are there other nominations for vice chairperson? Okay, seeing none, Eileen, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Budney?
Yes.
Mayor Driver?
Yes.
Ms. Giles McCormick?
Yeah.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mrs. Zanglehart?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Dasner?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. That was very nice.
All right, item four on the agenda, Chair remarks. Why don't you say a few things before we get started tonight? Because unlike a regular reorg meeting, we actually have a business item to continuation for a private hearing, so I don't want to I don't want to speak terribly too long. But I also wanted to just point out a few things from last year and looking forward to this year. So I do want to thank all of you for not only voting me again in for Chairperson, but also being a really great board last year and working through the difficulties of continuing remote, all at one of our meetings. Remote, we did squeak one in over the summer in person. And hopefully we'll be back to in person when it is safe to do so. It is not safe to do so right now, so. But it also demonstrates the resilience of all of you, of our professionals and all of the volunteers who are putting in the time and logging in from basements and attics and wrangling kids and cats and everything else. And I and I and I it is appreciated for all of the volunteer time that that everyone is putting into to make our town better. We are a small place that everyone seems to have an opinion about, and most of whom don't actually live in town. But we are the center of Hunterdon County, we are the county seat, and we are a historic town that everyone is paying attention to because we've got some really great history and we've got some wonderful potential that's starting to to come forward. The planning board's role is in some ways delineated by what our statute says we can and cannot do, but in other ways, it's the space where we can think creatively as to where we want to be as a community and where we want and where we want to be going. And I know it sounds like a broken record, which is also in and of itself a reference that is becoming dated. But we're going to get the master plan work done this year to 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 update and articulate that shared vision that we all have as a community for where we want to go. I'm hopeful that we'll have support from the county and the rest of that coming from council in the next few weeks. And Beth is is ready to jump in with that work to get moving on that. And I really do know that everyone here who's on the board cares about our town and cares about making sure that everyone's vision for the future is one of inclusivity, one of 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 growth that is not just more of, but is better than. And where we're trying to provide clarity for those who want to make investments in our town, whether they're homeowners or business owners, folks who've lived here a long time and folks who are moving in and choosing to make Flemington home. So thank you all for your attention and your diligence to this really important work. As a planner professionally and as an academic, it's great when I can talk about the wonderful things we do in Flemington in the in my classroom. It's great when I get to to show off about how well we do things. So again, thank you all for the work we've done and for the work ahead. Eileen sent out to everybody our annual report, which is by statute, we have to actually have a report that that lays it all out. And I would encourage everyone to read through it, not only just to know what's going on and went on last year because we have at least one new person who's joined us this year, but also to see the amount of work that we were able to accomplish over this year. It and it was it was it was good work, and I'm looking forward to to more good work in the in in 2022. And again, I really keep saying this, hopefully in person, like we can all sit and be in a room together and and do that hopefully, hopefully soon. And with that, I I just I'm gonna leave it at that and turn it over to the mayor for any remarks that Betsy wants to add.
It's a tough, tough line to follow, but I appreciate that. I'm looking forward to 2022. I think we have a lot of great stuff that's going to be coming down the pipeline with some really good redevelopment projects that will be re reusing underutilized properties throughout the borough. And I think that's very exciting that, you know, we can do development without knocking stuff down that has meaning to town, and we can do it under underutilized properties, you know, Liberty Village, the Agway properties, you all know where they're at. I'm looking forward to the master plan coming up this year and finally seeing that done. I'll be looking forward to when it's done and I can stop bugging certain people of how it's going to move through. So thank you for that. I do want to remind folks that tomorrow, the potential redeceiver, George Malone from Hoboken Brownstone, will be presenting his concept plan, his proposed concept plan. At the Stingle Factory, if you go to the HPC website, you can reserve a seat. If you can't make it tomorrow, either because it's in person and you're quarantined or don't want to end up in quarantine by going to an in-person event. One week later, you can do it online, and there will be a Zoom presentation of that as well. That said, I did appoint a neighbor, a brown street homeowner, to join the Liberty Village redevelopment committee. And Ellen Endo joined us for our first meeting of 2022 earlier this evening, actually right before this. The redevelopment committee did meet with the potential redeecker, George Malone. We saw his concept plan that he'll be presenting tomorrow. I think it's a pretty good plan. I think people, I mean, people are either going to like it or they're not going to like it. There's, you know, not a lot we can do on that. Finally, I do want to thank all of you, as Jeff did, for your time and being willing to serve. I'd like to welcome our new planning board member in the alternate two seat, Tony Parker. Thank you for being willing to serve, and we look forward to having you here as well. And that's it. And congratulations to Hannah Weitzman for moving up to a full planning board seat and also kind of around the corner, you're going to see movement on the Guitar Boy property as well, and that that redevelopment committee will be holding its first meeting next week, and I'd like to welcome Trent Levitt to that committee. We'll serve on it. So thank you for being willing to do that. It's a little different, Trent, than a planning board meeting, so I look forward to having you there, and I'll be sending out more with that as well. Councilwoman Caitlin Giles McCormick will also be on the Agway redevelopment committee, as is Councilwoman Jess Hand as well. And that's it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. And council remarks. By way of introduction, most, or if not all of you know Caitlin Giles McCormick, who is on Borough Council and is the class three member this year, but Caitlin, it's for the we we never had that meeting we were supposed to have about like 101, but the this is your opportunity to report anything from council as needed.
Well, welcome, Caitlin. Good to have you.
No, no planning board 101 class needed. We're just going to throw you right into the defense. Welcome. We're glad to have you.
Having the official would would be nice. I echo everything, Betsy.
Be careful what you wish for situation.
Yeah, I'm really looking forward to working more with all of you. Great, great folks, great company.
Do you have anything else to add from count from council or you're good? That's it? Okay, good. Item seven on the agenda, HPC comments. I don't see the HPC chair in the attendee panel. There was I don't think there was anything from HPC since our last meeting, right, Eileen? Yeah, so and I don't think they've had their reorganization meeting yet, so I think that's happening.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Yeah, okay. So that'll so we'll we'll hear from them. And we are going to, we are up to item eight on the agenda, which is our period for public comments, right, it's not currently open on a hearing in front of the board. If any member of the public wishes to be heard, please click on raise hand at the bottom or top of your screen. I do see we have one person on the phone, so that would be star nine to indicate that you'd like to speak. And while folks are doing that, I want to just check, Eileen, have we received anything by email or voicemail to the office?
No, we did not.
Okay. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item nine on our agenda. Resolution 22 dash 01, which is our, actually, I'm gonna, before we do that, I'm sorry. I realized on the agenda after I looked at it, we didn't have a spot on there to adopt the minutes from our prior meeting, unless I'm missing it, but I didn't see it on the agenda.
I'm sorry about that.
It's all good. So so I'm going to ask, so let's keep this.
I'm sorry, we should probably, I'm going to ask you as the chair. We have the minutes from the December 14th meeting, and then we also have minutes from the December 15th joint meeting.
Exactly. So both of which have been circulated previously, and so can I, Kara, let me, let me, do I need to move to amend the agenda or can I just insert it here?
Let's have a motion to amend the agenda.
All right.
To operate the resolution. Let's, we're going to do it right from the get-go in every single aspect of 2022.
All right.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to have item 12 be approval of the minutes from December 14.
Oh, wait, it is there.
As it reads, but then a new item 13 to be approval of the minutes from December 15.
There it is. Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
That's why I wanted to, I wanted to make sure that was there.
That'll be. Okay.
We'll deal with that after the other resolutions. Okay, good. Thank you. Moving to resolution PB 2022 dash 01. That's our normal first meeting establishing our meeting schedule for the next year and our notice for what will continue to be virtual platform meetings until further notice. So that that's been previously circulated, including the dates of the meetings. We have kept the second and fourth Tuesday with only a couple of exceptions there. Just due due to some conflicts with calendars, holidays, and one of them was Election Day. So I want to just make sure I've got this right. So just just, it is the second and fourth Tuesday, except instead, we're going to meet on September 13th and then 20th, which are one week apart because the following week is a holiday. October 11th would normally be a meeting, and we're not going to meet that day because council is meeting that night, and so we're going to push it. That's our only Wednesday meeting for for the year. And then the last one is the in November, we're going to have meetings in two subsequent weeks on the 15th and on the 22nd on Tuesdays. And other than that, we are following the kind of second and fourth pattern that we've had. I know that a couple of our professionals, because we moved it from our normal, may have some conflicts, and that's okay. We'll get coverage as needed. But that's what we're, that's what worked out for the majority of everything, trying to keep it consistent with other borough meetings and everything else. So can I get a motion and second for resolution 01? Driver will move.
A little second.
Any further question or discussion?
Sorry, I missed the second.
Todd.
Thank you.
All right, please call the roll.
Mayor Driver?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Giles McCormick?
Excuse me?
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Zanglehart? Yes.
Mr. Dasner?
Yes.
Mr. Budney?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution PB 2022 02. That's a little bit much, is for appointment for professional services. We are, I'm very happy to say that all of our board's professionals are returning or interested in returning. I'd like for us to approve their return. Everyone is at the same rates as they were in 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 the previous year, so can I get a motion in a second for resolution 02?
Angleheart moves. 220202.
Any question or discussion? All right, Eileen, can call the roll, please.
This is Zanglehart?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
An emphatic yes.
Mayor Driver?
Yes.
Ms. Giles McCormick?
Yeah.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Dasner?
Yes.
Mr. Budney?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Resolution PB 2022 03 is and she didn't put her own name on there, which is which is odd, but she didn't want to presume, so. And I I need a motion in a second to adopt, to 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 move, motion in a second for this resolution 03 to appoint Eileen Parks as Planning Board Secretary.
So move Cook.
Cook moved and yeah, Zangleheart second. Is there any further, any discussion or question there? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Cook?
Also an emphatic yes.
Mrs. Zanglehart?
Yes.
Mayor Driver?
Yes.
Ms. Giles McCormick? Sorry about that. Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Dasner?
Yes.
Mr. Budney?
An unequivocal yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All swallowed a thesaurus. Trying to try to out perform. All right. Item 12 was approval of the minutes, which I don't know why I missed that, but approval of the minutes for December 14th meeting. We'll vote on that first, and then we'll vote on the one from the joint meeting after that. And again, for for the Tuesday meeting, December 14, 2021, if you weren't at the meeting, you can't vote with. So that means that Tony is ineligible to vote on this one because he wasn't on the board at that point. But everyone else is eligible. So can I get a motion on the second for the minutes?
Caitlin too, she'll.
Yes, sorry. Sorry. Thank you.
So move Cook for item number 12, which is the minutes from December 14.
Angleheart seconds.
Any discussion or corrections on the the minutes? Okay, can I call the roll, please?
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Zanglehart?
Yes.
Mayor Driver?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mrs. Zanglehart? Sorry, Mr. Dasner?
Yes.
Mr. Budney?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Now, the new item on the agenda is the minutes from the joint meeting. Those were taken by Sally and distributed to everybody several weeks ago, actually, but but they were circulated and I get a motion in a second. Again, only for those who were, I need that from somebody who was at the joint meeting, which wasn't everybody.
Driver will move.
Budney second.
Any discussion or clarification on the minutes from the joint meeting?
Just a question on the vote.
Yes.
I don't know who was there, and should I just call the roll?
Call the roll, and if you weren't there, abstain from the vote.
Thank you.
And Caitlin was there, but not in her in her planning board role, but that's okay because she voted on it as council member already. You were there. All right, so can I get a, just call the full roll and we'll go from there.
Very good. Thank you. Mayor Driver?
Yes.
Ms. Giles McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Abstain.
Mrs. Zanglehart?
Yes.
Mr. Dasner?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Abstain.
Mr. Budney?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
And Ms. Weitzman?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for the a little bit longer housekeeping that we have at our first meeting today. Our under-chair items will, I want to, will deal with committee membership. And I want to give Tony Parker an opportunity to introduce himself to everybody when we get there, under-chair items, but we do have a continuation of the public hearing for Lee Roth, 91 Main Street, block 21, lot 25. Before we jump into that, though, I wanted to ask Kara, I just want to be clear on participation. Caitlin and Tony were not on the board before. Should they participate? Like, what, how do we, how do you want to handle that?
Well, first of all, have they reviewed any, or I should say, all of the transcripts and or recordings from the prior meetings?
I have not gotten through all of them. I've gotten through most of them, but not all of them.
Okay.
And Caitlin, have you had a chance to review the meeting, the the recordings from the prior meetings? Okay. So Kara, how do you want to handle that then?
Okay, so I mean, certainly they're on the board. They can ask questions. They cannot participate in the vote if that happens tonight. But certainly, as I said, if they have questions, they can certainly participate and ask.
Okay, good, good. So since we have new members of the board, can you ask, we can, let's do conflicts for the record?
Yes, correct. So as we typically do at the beginning of each meeting, this room, we did not have anything new on the agenda before the new members. Is there anyone that has any direct or indirect pecuniary or personal interest in any item on the agenda this evening? Specifically with regard to the Lee Roth application for 91 Main Street, block 21, lot 25?
No.
No.
Okay. Okay. And Mr. Chair, I I my understanding is that there is a new exhibit that we will be marking tonight that has been presented to the board and has been posted on the website. I can let Mr. Roth explain it, but just to kind of look at this from procedural perspective, we closed the public hearing at the last meeting.
We actually did vote to close the public hearing. We actually skipped that step.
Okay, okay.
So
we, I know that Mr. Roth summed up. I know we had public comment, and I know we were at the point where the board was discussing. So if we did not formally close it, that's fine, but we will need to go back and address that additional submission as well as the updated review letter for Mr. Clerico.
All right, so I'm going to promote Mr. Roth to panelist at this point, and obviously it sounds, from from what I understand, we definitely need Mr. Ingram at a minimum because there's some new material there from from the engineer. I don't know if there's anything else. We'll get, we'll get everybody there. We'll get, we'll get everybody there. So, Mr. Roth, I just, just procedurally, I see that Mr. Sterns is in the, is in the attending. Do you need to bring your planner up as well? Was that part of, should I promote him to the panel?
No, he is simply available in the event we need him and as an interested observer tonight.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I've got that. All right. So we were, as Kara was saying, we, we have some new, there was at least some new information that needs to get put on the record, right Kara?
Yes, that's correct. So just for housekeeping purposes, what we'll mark as exhibit eleven of the applicant would be the stormwater management exhibit that Mr. Ingram will describe for the, more clearly for the board. And then we'll mark as exhibit PB dash eight. This is the updated technical review letter that Mr. Clerico submitted. And that review letter was dated January eighth, I believe, just bear with me.
Yeah, yeah, January.
Yes, January eighth, two thousand twenty-two. And this is an update of his original letter of November twenty-four, twenty twenty.
Okay, so Mr. Ingram has already previously been sworn. So, Mr. Roth, I'll let you have him introduce that now.
Thank you, Wayne. Would you unmute yourself and talk about the exhibit which you prepared at the request of the board and their engineer? Explain what it is and address, if you will, the report submitted by the board engineer.
I'm sorry, Bob, you've got your hand up. Is there something you need to ask before we get started?
Point add, there's also revised site plan that accompanied that.
Was that a separate? All right. So do we need to mark that separately, Kara, or is that?
You don't, I'm just saying there's a revised site.
Okay. And so Wayne, why don't you also describe the revised site plan as well as the date of that and we'll incorporate all of that as exhibit eight, as exhibit eleven?
Sure. It was a full nine sheet plan set of our site plans with a revision date of one six two thousand twenty-two.
Great, thank you.
And if I can, I'll just, excuse me, share my screen.
You should be able to.
Sheet four of that plan. If everyone can see. All right, so right around Christmas time, I, I met with Mr. Clerico and Mr. Campion on the project site to kind of review what options we could propose for a stormwater system for the property as well as to address the utility concerns which were raised in the prior hearing. So kind of the conclusion that we came to was to try and provide an underground detention system so that we're not doing infiltration, which could have a negative impact on some of the adjacent buildings which may have basements. And so what we, we've tried to do then was basically minimize the pitch from the existing discharge at the street because there is no storm drainage within Main Street. So we made, we took the outlet that we have at the curb and we backed that up into the parking lot at a minimum pitch that we can provide. And then figured out how big of a system we could put in with that pitch and with having the appropriate cover over that system, you know, for traffic loading. And what we determined we could do was provide a series of essentially seven rows of fifteen inch pipe, which, you know, essentially we're going to take the roof runoff from the rear building. And we're going to pipe that into this system and it's going to detain it and release it out to the, to the street in accordance with the, with the existing condition. But do that over a longer period of time so that we cut down on the rate. In either scenario, what we showed is that, you know, we are going to propose a slight reduction in impervious coverage. So inherently, there's a slight volume decrease. But volume is really not what we're changing here with the tension. The same amount of water essentially is going to leave, but it's going to be in a more controlled fashion. So with this system, the calculations we provided showed that in the two-year storm will be at eighty-four percent of the existing flows in the ten-year seventy-eight point eight and in the hundred-year seventy-eight point nine of the, the flow rate. So it is a, it's a decent reduction, you know, between about fifteen and twenty percent of the flow rates from what they were previously. Now, the other concern that was raised and rightfully so is, you know, what happens when this four-inch pipe at the street, which, you know, is kind of our controlling piece of our system, when that gets overwhelmed? Right now, there are grates that are on top of that in the public sidewalk. And when that pipe is overwhelmed today, it basically will bubble out of those grates and flow onto the street. Because that is in the, the public right-of-way and, you know, is in an area that we're expecting, you know, pedestrian traffic. It's not an ideal scenario. So what we discussed and what we show here is that we're going to take up the grates on top of those trench drains and cover them with a solid cover. And then we're going to have that pipe. Basically, what will happen is it's going to back up to a new trench drain, which we're going to install across the frontage of our driveway. So in between our property and the building next door, we'll have a trench drain and that will now be the overflow out of the public right-of-way. And if there is such a volume that cannot be accommodated by the pipe, it'll basically weer up or there because we don't want to have happen is, you know, it's not preferred to have a roof leader discharge in a concentrated fashion or, you know, back it up, up a roof leader, you know, on either one of the buildings, especially because the front building has internal drains. You know, that, that could cause damage to the structure. So, you know, what will happen is it's still going to weer up. But it's going to flow in a more distributed fashion because this trench drain will be not, you know, in line and perpendicular to the sidewalk, it'll be parallel. So that whole, you know, eight, eight, nine foot width of our driveway will be, you know, mechanism that that can weer over at the same elevation and flow across the sidewalk into the street. And, you know, no matter what we do here, the, the water needs to flow across the sidewalk. It's what happens today. It's what will happen when this is done. We don't have a storm system that we can tie into in the street. But, you know, the positive aspect here is that it's, it's a less volume than it is today. And by reducing the volume, excuse me, rate, flow rate, by reducing that rate, we're ensuring that more water is going to be able to go out that four-inch pipe at the curb into the street without going over the sidewalk than currently happens today. That was the primary change to the plan. Other than that, we just tried to do a little bit of cleanup to address some of the concerns, which we intended to provide anyway, but just to depict them. We, we show the planter box to be installed adjacent to the building and the frontage. So that pedestrians try and go down the sidewalk further from the building, which would improve the, their visibility of vehicles coming in and out of the driveway. We updated our table of trip generation, which was identified to us last time. And we clarified some, you know, locations and, and of the EV charging systems. So that, you know, it's clear that, you know, where we're providing them, you know, for the site. One other thing that we're exploring, if we can get permission from the neighbor, you know, when we had our site meeting, we did identify some, you know, some concerns, not with our property, but with the building just across on the other side of the driveway and their foundation. And, you know, positive thing that we thought could be done would be to install a curb on their property, but along, along their foundation such that any water coming down our driveway would be channeled into the driveway rather than against their foundation, which is, has, is experiencing damage today. And simply, we don't, you know, our plan regardless is going to reduce the water that they see and also direct it away from their foundation. But this would also be, in my, you know, in our opinion, a benefit to making sure that no further damage occurs. But again, this will be contingent upon that neighbor agreeing to it. So, you know, I don't think we needed to make our plan work in any way. But if they were amenable to it, you know, we, we would offer to do that, which, you know, again, I think benefits both properties. You know, the final thing that we discussed is at the rear of the site, as you see this hatched area. This is the access easement which exists from our property to the, to the adjacent property owned by the county. This provides access rights. It's somewhat indescript as to what that is, but that's what we're limited to today. It's access rights. We do not at this time have utility rights. So the suggestion was, you know, what option, you know, might exist that would allow us to run our utilities in this area rather than take them out to Main Street. Our problem at this point, and again, Mr. Roth can step in and let you know what discussions he may or may not have had with the county. But we do not have the right to do that today. And I would also suggest that, you know, by changing what the use of the building is and, and, you know, pot, you know, in some respects possibly intensifying it, you know, we may not even have the rights of access that currently exists there because we'd be changing the intensity of what the easement was intended for. But that's more of a legal issue, you know, to be debated. In any event, our building that we have there today and that we propose to modify covers the entire rear property line of our site. So there really is no legitimate means of access that this provides to us, you know, with the plan we have provided. And so we are continuing to show our utilities coming out to, to Main Street. As Mr. Clerico points out in his letter, what we would be suggesting is to not violate the moratorium on the sidewalk that exists from the streetscape project and would instead make a request to council to grant us a waiver to allow us to do a small bore underneath the streetscape sidewalk so that we could connect our utilities. You know, in discussions with Mr. Campion, you know, the reasons, you know, primary reasons for this prohibition were, you know, utility providers were damaging other utilities with long runs. I don't think that's a concern here because we're talking about a matter of a few feet and width. You know, where we have very well mapped out where we, you know, we're not likely to hit any, you know, utilities of concern in that with already knowing where the utilities are in the street from the, the streetscape project. So I don't think we have that concern here and our request of the council would be to, to grant us that waiver. I think that more or less, you know, sums up what we've provided and what we're going to propose for the site. Obviously, Mr. Clerico needs to do some additional review of our stormwater report. And, you know, we're happy to agree to address any of those, you know, additional concerns or changes he might have. But, you know, in, in, you know, in, in concept of the design, you know, we're trying to make a system here that, you know, provides adequate setbacks to not interfere with our utilities that we need. Keep a decent distance to allow for constructability. You know, given this minimal area, make sure that we don't have any, you know, concerns with adjacent foundations. And, you know, I think it provides a meaningful reduction, you know, to, to benefit the site on what is already, you know, almost fully impervious property. So that's, that's about all we, we have with these revisions.
Wayne, just a question I want to ask you about it. Is it your professional opinion, having worked on this project for over a year and a half, that what is being proposed here is an improvement in relation to all of the aspects? That is the utilities, the impervious and all aspects of this project as compared to what was here or would be here if this project were not approved, approved?
Yes, I think, you know, these are all benefits that we don't currently have in the existing plan. You know, we still need relief from the borough ordinance on stormwater, but, you know, this is an improvement over what we have leaving, you know, the system alone today and, and what occurs, you know, with, with that runoff.
The only other thing, Mr. Chairman, the easement out the back has been mentioned. I've looked further into that. I have been in communication with the county legal department, a associate attorney in their department is looking at this. He has not gotten back to me. And he's done some traveling since the last meeting of the, of this board and my contacting him. So whether the county would be amenable to running utilities out through that or not, I cannot answer that. That is a possible alternative if we can't work out what Wayne has proposed to enter under the driveway entrance, which is part of the street scape. But I've, I have also had conversations with the prior municipal engineer who I worked with when they, when the municipality needed my approval to be able to tear up some of my sidewalk and driveway in order to execute the street scape plan. And he has mentioned that at least, although he's not currently the municipal engineer, it's his opinion that if he were, that the approval would be easy to obtain from a practical viewpoint. Also, in terms of the easements, I've looked back over it and the easement that was gained that's defined on the plan is the easement that was negotiated between the Hunterdon County Democrat that at the time owned the property, which is now county property. And Mr. Curtis, who was my predecessor in the ownership of my property. That negotiation was restricting the easement to less than it had been because the old easement, as I'll call it, was so broad, nobody knew exactly where it was. And the attorneys representing the parties were Ryman Herr of Herr &amp; Fisher and Ed Large of Large Scamlin Dancinger. And Ed Large at the time, besides representing the Hunterdon County Democrat, was also the county attorney and knew that the county was looking at buying that property and he was looking to restrict it to some extent. And they paid my predecessor some money and got him to agree to defining it as is shown on the maps originally by Mr. Brokaw and now shown by Wayne on the most recent submission. So it limits more than expands any easement in the back. I think with that, unless there's anything that Wayne needs to respond to that your engineer, Mr. Clerico.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to give them, you know, because there's new testimony, we kind of have to go through the steps here. So I'm going to ask for questions of Mr. Ingram on the testimony given this evening. Let's restrict it to that from first hour professionals, then our board and then members of the public. So we'll start with Bob.
Wayne, in your testimony, you indicated that that subsurface system is collecting water from the rear building. Is it collecting any water from the front building?
Yeah, I believe so. I think we're taking, trying to take anything in the rear of the property and connecting that as well. Yes. We have it. Yeah, we have an additional clean out there connecting to that.
And for the sake of reference, can you give the board some idea of the volume of storage in those pipes as it might compare to like a depth of runoff from the roof, the roof area that it's collecting? In other words, would it accommodate a two inches of rainfall? I understand it's not a, a fixed storage vessel. It's a, you know, it's a staged storage outlet system, but if it were a fixed vessel, the volume of those pipes would, to one volume runoff might that accommodate?
On our pond report, I'm seeing two hundred and fifty-eight cubic feet. So cubic feet is, you know, seven, seven and a half gallons. So you're talking, I mean, roughly fifteen hundred gallons.
Relating that to the surface area of the roof, I did a rough calculation. Looks like about an inch worth of depth of runoff. Would you agree that's approximately what it might be?
Yeah. I agree.
I also had a comment in here. We discussed it in the field, the sewer lateral for the adjoining building. It's, it asks what to be shown on the plan. It's not shown on the plan. When we met in the field, you indicated where it's located. You want to go on record and indicate where that is?
Yeah, it, it, I mean, to our knowledge and, and it's just a, given the time, we didn't have a chance to get through all of the revisions to get them in, but there is a clean out that is on the adjacent property and it appears as if the neighbor sewer line basically rides the property line and maybe partially on our lot, but essentially on the property line. So that we, you know, we concur that, you know, basically we want to investigate that, get a final location. And it may cause us to, you know, relocate some of the utilities within there. You know, we may move the water lines around a little bit within the driveway, maybe swap them with the sanitary line, you know, depending upon the location, but they'll still, you know, stay in the same, you know, general. they'll still, you know, stay in the same, you know, general pathway, but we'll relocate them to accommodate any distances required for that.
Relocation would end up on on your neighbor's property, though, or?
No, our our relocations of our own utilities that we're proposing, you know, we weren't proposing to touch the neighbors. You know, line, as long as it it's of adequate depth and, you know, doesn't interfere with anything, we would, you know, show it on the plan and and let it remain as is.
So I guess I didn't quite follow what you just said earlier. So you're 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 willing to relocate your utilities for what purpose?
Right. So if our water lines are too close and we need to provide a distance, we would, you know, we can, we can flip our sanitary line with the water, put the sanitary closer, get more setback, or just shift them all a little bit further away. I mean, we we have the room, but it's a it's a fair point that we don't want to interfere with their with their lines. So we would, you know, we would move those south essentially.
If I may, the neighbor knows and recognizes that they do not have a right to have their sewer line on our property as they do have it on our property. I have allowed them to excavate on my property to service their sewer line. It did not make sense to me as a practical matter to require of them that they remove the line from my property. So I've allowed them to keep the line there. They know and understand that. And they realize that they are essentially on my property as a licensee. They do not have an easement or a right to be on my property with that line. Nevertheless, our engineers have been instructed to allow their line to stay there as long as it's practical to do so.
And Wayne, can you explain, you indicated the the say desire, the offer maybe to put a curb line on the adjoining property adjacent to the building. Just explain how you're grading that driveway.
So the proposal. What we're going to try to do is channelize our our changed driveways such that we're we're pitching it towards the center away from both foundations. So right now, it runs slightly towards the neighbor. And basically, the bottom of his foundation is is wearing away. So what, you know, no matter what happens, what we're going to do is we're going to take the center of our driveway down a little bit. So all the water that we have coming to the street is going towards the center and not towards either either ours or his his foundation that proposed. If he agrees to the curb, I I think all the better. But, you know, I think either way, you know, no damage will be occurring due to our, you know, our property or project.
And he is likely to agree to that. I have not discussed it with him, but we have a very good relationship with him.
And just again, for the board's maybe clarification, the trench drain you're building at the head or end of your driveway is that it butts the concrete sidewalk that's along Main Street. That's a dual purpose drain. It's it's picking up any surface water that happens to be coming down the driveway before we get out onto the sidewalk. And in the event that the volume of water coming down either the pipe or the driveway is more than the 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 narrow trench drain that currently exists out to the gutter line, that would be an overflow?
Correct. And you and you're right, that is another added benefit, you know, in a in a smaller storm. You know, water that's coming down the driveway is no longer going to go across the sidewalk. It'll enter that trench drain and go out through the through the curb cut. So you know, in in smaller storms, you know, it'll it'll function with that benefit. Yes.
Think that was all of my questions, but the board members go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I just want to make sure. Given the updated submission, just want to make sure, Beth, did you have anything that you need to ask of Wayne?
No, thank you.
And okay, just making sure. And I don't think there was anything traffic related, but I just wanted to double check and see if if Scott had anything.
That's correct. I don't have anything and other than that the revised plans have had the trip generation projections consistent with our memo from November.
Okay, good. Members of the board, any questions for Mr. Ingram? Wayne, if you could stop sharing for just a second, maybe it'll be easier for me to see everybody. Thanks. Susan.
My question's actually for Mr. Roth, if that's okay. Since they both gave testimony.
Let's, let's start, let's, let's, let's wrap up the engineer and then we can go to 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 Mr. Roth. How's that? A little neat and organized here.
That's fine.
Questions for the engineer? Okay, so I am going to just see if there are members of the public with questions for the engineer, for Mr. Ingram on the testimony given this evening. Please click on raise hand. Okay, seeing none. Let's, let's do it this way. Susan's right, Mr. Roth put a few things on the record there. Just want to make sure, did Kara or Beth or or Bob or or Mark have any, sorry, Scott have any questions for for Mr. Roth? No? Good. Okay.
I have a question, I have maybe an observation. Some of my other comments in the board were really directed to the board members themselves. There weren't questions. They were just.
All right. So let's, let's hold that for the moment. We'll come back to that when we have our board discussion. And so Susan, go ahead and ask Mr. Roth your question. We're up for that now.
Yeah, that'd be great. And just as a side note, Jeff, I would, I would appreciate it if Bob could go through his highlighted, the highlights of the changes on his report after this is all, you know, after we get through this phase. So my question for Lee. At one point, Wayne mentioned about the rear easement. And he said it wasn't clear whether there was allowed to be utilities through there or not. And and then you followed up right after Wayne talking about the easement. So I guess my question to you is, since you guys have been doing some research lately, have you gotten any, it it any documentation or learned anything new about the historic requirements of that easement? Are are you aware if there's utilities permitted or or specifically not permitted? All all I heard was that the original easement was more open ended than the revised easement. But I I didn't get any clarity as to whether there were or were not utilities permitted in that easement. And if the answer is you don't know, that's fine, too.
Well, the 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 real answer is utilities are not addressed. And near as I know, were not addressed by the people who negotiated the change that resulted in the, what I'll call the more modern defined easement. So that is something that I'm in discussion with one of the county attorneys about. But so I can't say that it it definitely does not say you cannot put utilities. It also does not say definitely you can put utilities. It's described as an access easement. But it doesn't say whether it's an access easement for just vehicles or an access easement for utilities or what it would be. I mean, it's a strange situation because it was done at a time when the building was clearly in place. And it would have seemed to me at the time that it's kind of an impractical easement because if it was an access easement, you can't get to it. There's about a foot of space between buildings. And certainly you could walk through the build, between the buildings and go out that access. In fact, for this past week, my neighbor has had roofers on my property, working on their building and and on part of their building that extends behind what you might characterizes their basic main building. I've had no problem giving them permission to do that. And we've had shingles and roofing material and such all over our parking lot, but they've done a good job and they've cleaned it all up when they were finished. And again, that's part of the relationship we have with that neighbor. So you could walk through there. You certainly couldn't drive your vehicle through there. Could you put pipes through there? Maybe. But that's not something that we look at as practical in in this situation when it's so much easier to go out the driveway.
And as the, but as the but as the developer, now I'm kind of asking you to switch your your lawyer hat and put your developer owner hat on. If, if all things being equal, and if if utilities were permitted through that easement, would that be something that you would be willing to consider? If if the problems with the accessing under the sidewalk on Main Street were not available to you?
If they truly were not available, which I think would be unreasonable if they weren't available, then we'd have to consider any other easement. We have to do something with the property. Right at the present time, I have two buildings and I am the only occupant of this entire property. And I've got to do something with this property. And so one way or another, we're going to have to accomplish this, this project.
Okay. And then my last question is actually a question I think that I need to ask Kara in regards to some of the testimony that Mr. Roth provided. Mr. Roth gave testimony that I consider hearsay from a, from our former engineer, town engineer. I would assume that would be not something that we can consider as hearsay.
So the typical rules of evidence do not apply before the board in as much as they would be considered by the court rules of the state of New Jersey and applicable to court proceedings. That being said, this board is very educated and it needs to take a look at the testimony provided in light of what was said, in light of who said it, and in light of what the surrounding testimony was with regard to that. If you feel that based upon everything you've heard, that that is something that makes sense, then certainly that's something you could consider. If you feel that it was something that you would need to have actual proof or actual testimony of in order to consider it to be valid and and utilize that in connection with your deliberations and your decision making, then that as well, you would weigh that as any other evidence that you have before you, but understanding that this was a third party that was presenting you with that information and it did not come directly via something in writing that was marked as an exhibit or directly from the from the speaker.
Okay, great. Thanks for the lawyerly lesson.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, actually, I have a question for Lee. If I recall correctly, the prior hearing, there was some testimony at me by your architect that this building historically had been used at one point in time as a automobile garage or vehicular garage or something of that nature. And you indicated just now that when that access even was renegotiated or better defined, this building was actually in existence. Is it possible that this building, when it was used as a garage, actually had a door on that side and they were using that for vehicular access into the building?
No, I'm I'm confident that nobody used it as vehicle access. I think what you're referring to, as I may have said, that there were two winters when I stored a car in the building. At the, if you look at the building from within the courtyard, you notice what looks like a garage door to the left. That is designed as a very large conference room, but it is framed, but it is used strictly by me for storage of files that are closed and have been transferred out of our active office. There were two years when I stored a car in there. And I believe Mr. Curtis may have had a car in there, but it was never used as a garage in the sense of a repair facility, or it was never used as a way to get on to the county or the Hunter County Democrat property. There was no door in the back of it.
So it's probably reasonable to assume that when your predecessor in ownership, however many generations back that might have been redefine the easement with the county, I gather, at that point, or perhaps it was the Democrat, I'm not sure, the ownership change.
It it was clearly with the Democrat. It was negotiated after Howard Moreau had died. He had been the owner and the publisher. And it was negotiated, as you can tell from the signatures on the documents by Seeley Thomas, who was then the heir, one of the heirs, he was married to Ann Thomas. And he was the publisher. And he was represented by Ed Large, who negotiated with Ryman Herr, who was representing Mr. Curtis. And Mr. Curtis owned this property long enough that I did business with him in his sporting goods store when I was still in high school. So that was quite a while ago. This is not a recent happening.
So when Mr. Curtis was negotiating with the owner of the Democrat to redefine this easement, this building was in place. To your best of your knowledge, it was not, it wasn't being used by access for hit vehicular access.
It wasn't used for access. It was used by him, interestingly enough, as a boat showroom and a storage facility. There was a trapdoor that allowed him to move inventory from the ground floor and there were two big plate glass windows. Kind of strange circumstance because it wasn't plate glass windows out on Main Street. It was plate glass windows into a courtyard that I can imagine very few people got to see.
But my, my question or thought here was that at the time, Mr. Curtis renegotiated or negotiated this finative easement with the Democrat, this building was in place. To best of your knowledge, that easement was not being utilized. But rather than extinguishing it, they just redefined it.
I believe that's correct. Yes.
So in other words, Mr. Curtis was preserving potential rights to possibly use it at some point.
Well, I guess he was. I think he was principally getting fifteen hundred dollars, which is what the easement documents indicate he was given. Building, by the way, was probably built in nineteen twenty four because that date was carved into the concrete that encased the steel beam that is a support through the building.
And this this negotiation you referenced by Mr. Curtis was after that point in time?
Yes.
So the building was in place when that was?
Oh, yes.
Okay. All right. So, yeah, Carrigan.
I'm sorry, just one follow up to Bob's line of questioning, Lee. Are you aware of any discussions as to whether that access was maintained in order to be utilized if that building should ever be demolished?
I don't, I don't know what their actual discussions were. I can't imagine that anybody believed it would be used unless for some reason that building was demolished. And I can't imagine how it would have been demolished. Because it was concrete block, steel beam. It's not something that wasn't a wood frame, old wood frame building likely to burn down, which is the most likely way the building, a building would have been removed if it had been of that nature.
Okay. And and if for some reason the building was demolished in part or or in whole and relocated, that access easement could still be utilized at the rear of that property, right?
Well, I I would think so. And the only way, I I mean, I couldn't imagine as a practical matter with our current zoning, anybody would have done this. But I can also imagine that back in the fifties and sixties, someone might have torn both buildings down and and built a two or three store story building that occupied the entire lot and provided no parking at all. After all, we didn't have zoning in Flemington until about nineteen fifty six.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Thanks, Cara. Okay, so at this point, I just want to make sure. We do have Bob's review letter. Bob, is there any? Carrigan.
I'm sorry, real quick, did we open the public to Lee or no?
We did not, and you're right, I should do that. Members of the public who want to have, who have questions for Mr. Roth. Okay, thank you. That's, you're right. Let's, let's be, let's make sure we get all the steps in. All right. So I want to make sure I understand this. Bob, your, everything else in your review letter is for this, or that we have not yet covered. Or matters that are for discussion by the board and not need Mr. Ingram's further input. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct. I can go through, we can go through them and say, I believe I asked Mr. Ingram the questions that related to items that were for him to address.
Okay. Yeah, because what I, what I, why I'm leading that is I want to, I want to actually close the public hearing and move towards board discussion, which we started last time, but we need to continue. But I want to make sure before we vote to close the public hearing and I want to make sure that there's no other testimony that we need from the applicant's witnesses. You know, before we take that step.
Would you like I could just kind of zip through this and just make sure we?
You can. I mean, I trust you. I'm just, I'm just trying to avoid having to vote and reopen the hearing and all this other stuff. I want to, I want to make sure that everything.
Real briefly, yeah, real briefly, it's just a reiteration of the version of the prior report. The new comments are all highlighting. So you can draw attention to what was added. Basically, you got the revised plan, you got the revised stormwater report. I made some notes about some items that were changed on the plan. I did ask, and it's really up to the board what they want to hear, as I did ask Wayne some point, just to clarify what those revisions were. I summarized them as I saw them. But you didn't necessarily have testimony on that. I defer to board to.
So let me, let me, let me ask, do you feel like we have had enough testimony from Mr. Ingram about the stormwater narrative? Let's take that, that chunk.
Yeah, I think you heard all you're going to hear about the stormwater.
Okay, so that's, that's one category. The second category is the easement, which I believe we have heard testimony about the easement from both Mr. Ingram and from Mr. Roth, right? And then so that's vehicular, that's. And that's board, that's.
You heard about the, you heard testimony from Mr. Ingram about the sewer lateral.
Yep. And the question about the governing body, that's jurisdictional question. The land of the planting box is, has been addressed.
And I, I think the witnesses have responded to any questions that were addressed in here.
Okay, so it sounds like we have, we have covered everything that was in, was in the updated review letter. Okay. At this point then, Cara, correct me if I'm wrong, procedurally, we'd want to close the public hearing?
That's correct. Want a motion to close the public hearing? And then we can proceed to board deliberation, additional comments from the professionals, whatever the board's pleasure is.
Okay, so can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Does that mean that Bob is going to go through his highlights?
Yes, but that'll be for the purposes of the board.
After the board, after we close the, the public.
Correct.
Thank you.
And no comments from the public?
Well, oh, we have to do that.
We do that last time. Yeah, we might as well.
Let's do it again. Yeah, thank you, Todd. Many members of the public who would wish to make a comment on the application. We did ask for this last time, but you're right, we had more testimony. Let's ask for it again. Any members of the public who wish to speak in conjunction with this application, our board policy is for folks to be recognized for up to three minutes to make a statement. So if you'd like to make a statement on the record about this application, click on raise hand.
I, I think two people are on the phone, aren't they?
No, I'm just. They're not there.
Oh, they're gone now. Okay.
Yeah, I'm seeing names with, that are all, those are all Zoom people. Star nine, if you are on a phone. Okay, so seeing none. Thank you, Todd. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Engelhardt seconds.
Thank you. Eileen, please call the roll.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingleher?
Yes.
Mayor Driver?
Yes.
Ms. Giles McCormick?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mr. Dasha?
Yes.
Mr. Bundy?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Okay, so the public meeting is closed. I'm going to move Mr. Roth and Mr. Ingram into the, back to attendees. I think I clicked on the wrong thing and I bumped Bob. I have to fix, I'll get Bob back. Sorry. Problems of Zoom. Sorry, Bob.
Nothing personal, I hope.
No, no, stray mouse, stray mouse. Okay, public hearing is closed. This is the time for board discussion, hearing from our professionals and we started some of this last week. But I do, I think just because of for continuity sake, let's start with Bob and the items that are in his updates to his review letter.
All right. So as I indicated, what's highlighted in my report is new, is new information. I left some of the older comments are still there. They were comments, or not, they weren't comments, they were items for consideration by the board. But as you, as you go through this, you know, you heard the testimony on the stormwater narrative. Going to come, just zipping through here on page three. They redefine the area disturbance slightly to include Main Street. That's just a fact. Moving on to page four. They, they have incorporated the subsurface system as Wayne indicated. It is not technically in compliance with the ordinance provision. That's the ordinance provision. It talks about impervious coverage or allowable impervious coverage. They're seeking relief because they're, because they're not putting in a stormwater system that's complying with the ordinance. They've only allowed 55% impervious coverage. And the current site exceeds that and even in its revised fashion, it will still exceed that. So that's, that's the variance belief associated with actually coverage and the caveat there is it relates back to stormwater.
But I just want to make sure I got that, that correctly. The proposed stormwater system that is now in the most recent update doesn't meet the full standard for them to bring to get the bonus up to 75% impervious. So they need to meet 55, but the existing conditions are 90 anyway.
Right. The board, the board incorporated what I'll call green infrastructure provisions in the design standards a number of years ago. They basically said, under certain thresholds, and this project meets one of those thresholds, that an applicant is only entitled to 20% less impervious coverage unless they can incorporate stormwater management that would, and they list a whole number of things, infiltration, permeable pavers, I forget what the other ones were. But for the reasons for the testimony you heard this evening, this applicant initially wasn't doing anything with stormwater management. And after the meeting Wayne and I had with Mike at the site, there was some acknowledgement made that in fact could do something. So what you heard testimony on tonight is to something you're doing, the restrictions that they're under on the site and why they believe it's maximizing their, their ability to do something. I wouldn't, I wouldn't disagree with anything I heard in the way of testimony. Coverage is a limitation. Gravity connection out to the street is obviously a requirement. Putting a piping system in is, is a standard way of accommodating that. There might be other methodologies, but this is a common methodology. And given the limitations, we heard testimony at the last meeting, I initially suggested that perhaps this could go onto the floor of the new building or the renovated building. And the indication was that it couldn't because of reasons you heard at the last meeting. So that's essentially what they're, what they're proposing. There's also a variance, and this was addressed also in Jay's report, but there's a variance associated with the number of parking spaces. I just reiterated, updated the report to reflect what they're actually proposing, which is the the two EV, electrical vehicle charging stations out front, which gives them the ability to, under the new regulations, to actually account for one less requirement of parking space. I, I count this as a requirement for 17 and 16.3, but I always thought you rounded up 17. And they would end up being essentially five, you know, five spaces short on this because they're only providing 12. They're only providing 12, but the 17 would technically get reduced to 16 if you grant the allowance for the EV space. Moving on this, moving on to stormwater, which is section three of my report going on to page five. You heard the testimony from Wayne about the reductions that are being accommodated here, the restrictions that they, the limitations they have to work with. One observation and suggestion, Mr. Roth indicated that he was in some preliminary discussions with the county or perhaps using that easement in the back for utility purposes. Should that come to fruition? My suggestion that they would also use, look to use that for stormwater connection. We have nothing on Main Street and no storm drainage system whatsoever. It's a relatively flat area and the connections that they're utilizing to get out to Main Street, we just did one are really relatively restricted. They're only, I never measured them, but they're probably only one or two inch or maybe three inch channels. So they're going to even be restrict, restrictive for use in this particular purpose. If, and whereas that on Court Street, you have plenty of fall, you have storm drainage out there, you have inlets right in the vicinity where these easements come out. I don't believe Court Street's under any kind of a moratorium restriction for street opening. So my suggestion would be in the event that the applicant is able to solve this sewer water utility connection issue on Main Street by utilizing the easement in the back through the county property to get to Court Street, that they also utilize that for the stormwater connection, at least for the rear building. I think that would, they could still put their storm collection system in, they could still put their retention system in, routing going out to Main Street. I think it'd be preferable to take it out to Court Street where we at least based on our site inspection, looks like we have no restrictions, but that's just an observation. You heard the testimony about how the system was designed. I do have to just take a quick, if you are approving this, I'm asked you condition, just to look at the crunch, the numbers. I just did a general overview and summarized what, and you heard a testimony from Wayne as to what they're, what they're designing here. And you heard the design limitations, you know, from Wayne in testimony about how they're connecting out onto Main Street. You also heard that they, they may, if the owner allows, put a curb line along the adjoining building. That building is, appears to be suffering from water damage, presumably from coming off of this property. I think what they're, how they're grading the property is the best they can grade it on their site to the extent that they're willing to and the owner is willing to allow them to put a curb in. That might not be a bad idea. But again, I'm not sure that's a, that's necessarily a condition of any approval because it's not on the applicant's property. I also noted that they did show the replacement of the remaining sidewalk out on Main Street. They're indicating it's going to be removed and reset to follow the design standards of the adjoining sidewalk that was installed as part of the downtown improvement project. But grade wise, it's going to go back in at the grades that it's, that it's at. And reason for that is they're cutting a lot of that up anyway, just to do some of the connection, some of the other work. You heard the testimony about the easement and the history of the easement and the rights and restrictions, potential rights and restrictions. And use of that, so I don't like to offer anymore on that. Moving on to page seven. Your testimony about the, where the existing sewer lateral on the adjoining property is, you heard Mr. Roth indicate that I think he referred to it as a potential license or something, but he has allowed the adjoining owner to access that line the use of this property, whether that needs to be recognized somehow in any approval. Because now we're going to be doing this substantial improvement of driveway, whether it needs to be recognized in some fashion. I'll refer to Cara on. Item five is the layout issues and deals with the, again, but mostly with the access easement. Again, it apparently has not been, at least in what's been testified to of record, it has not been used for vehic. The rights were there, they were retained by this property owner. They were modified, negotiation by this property owner and you join, or at some point in time when this building was present, but apparently they've never been utilized. But at the time that they were renegotiated, they weren't extinguished either. So they, they apparently still exist. And they are for the, if I recall, the wording in the easement was for vehicular and pedestrian access. From Court Street. Again, item B, we, this is a significant expansion, modification, expansion of this building. Not on the first floor, the first floor representation here is they're preserving their first floor in its entirety in terms of walls, floors. You're doing some internal structural support in order to support the second and third floor, both of which actually expand out beyond the footprint of the building, or at least out on the Main Street side. A reset in on the backside because of building co issues and expand out on the Main Street side. There are variances associated with the existing building. I believe they were referenced in Beth's report. Setback mostly. And I'm just indicating here, you know, the boards, if the boards approving this on the premise that the building is being preserved, they would have to be under condition and the representation that that first floor of this building is being preserved. And if it comes to, at some point in time, a realization that it can't be preserved, I think, I think the applicant would need to be back before the board just to revisit that as a, because that right now, that's not an option that's being presented on, on the table as a viable option. Again, the sidewalk in the front. The rest of this really deals with the restrictions that are associated with the improvements that were done on Main Street. Right now, they're just showing insulation. They're not showing how they might be installed. But obviously, any open excavation would require a removal of what's there. Any subsurface, proposed subsurface would need to, would be an exception from the ordinance. We need to go, as Mike had indicated at the last meeting, we need to go to Borough Council for that. I understand, it's not really shown on a plan, but I understood from our site meeting with Wayne that all of the new underground electric facilities that are serving the light systems on, on Main Street, there's a transformer adjacent to this property and they run from that transformer. So I'm assuming they run parallel to the curb. I'm assuming that all these utilities would have to cross under them. That's not been documented on the plan. I don't know that as a fact, but based on based on what we talked about in the field, I believe that would perhaps be the case. And they are putting a small planting box. I indicated that maybe best you just weigh in on what kind of, what you, what kind of plants you put in there, whether that's an adequately sized box, it's relatively small. But its purpose was for preventing, prevent, or not preventing, but probably yeah, preventing pedestrians from walking right along the building to somewhat improve site visibility. And it would, it would at least accommodate that. And they indicated how they, this wasn't noted on the prior plan, but there are some surface air conditioner, air handling units that are being removed, they're actually being mounted on the buildings and the revised plan notes where they're being mounted on the building. And that's it.
All right. So we did have questions for Bob at our previous meeting, but I want to, because we have this updated review, do folks have questions for Bob at any of this new stuff? Or even any of the old stuff? It doesn't matter. I just, we'll go through like, I'll go through like that if there's questions for Bob. Susan?
Okay.
Okay, um. Bob, given the, given the limitations of the site. And based on the stormwater narrative that you just received on Friday. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure, you know, I know you had a limited amount of time to go through that. In your opinion? Um, are they doing enough? Because at this point. Three days before essentially our final meeting on this project. You know, we've kind of, I feel like we've kind of dragged them down this route kicking and screaming, we've gotten a. A design that does include some stormwater detention, um, to allow that rate, um, flow. To, you know, be longer to kind of hold back some of the water and then let it release at a slower rate. Which is what we asked for, so finally, after all this time. We are see, seeing some movement on it. I guess my, what I need to know from you, from a professional opinion is. Are they doing enough? In regards to stormwater?
Well, uh, uh, enough is more of a judgmental call than anything else, uh, it is variance from the ordinance, um. The, uh, the, the standard I had suggested in, in the way these typically looked at. Uh, again, these, this is not under our stormwater ordinance, this is under our land development ordinance, and it really all relates back to impervious coverage. Uh, again, this project meets the threshold, the threshold would say they're only entitled to fifty-five percent impervious coverage. Uh, unless they can do the green infrastructure. In this case, they're doing what they can reasonably do on the property. Uh, but it's not what that provision, that section of the ordinance would otherwise require. So you're kind of looking at, you know, this, you know, an existing condition with excess, excess, as it relates to this provision of the ordinance. Impervious coverage, you're not looking at a plan that's looking to reduce it to comply. You're looking at a plan that's looking to try to accommodate the provision of that section. But not to the full extent that the, the section would otherwise have, have encountered.
Which is why I started my question with, given the limitations of the site.
Well, like I said, it's, it's a judgment call, what I, what I wanted, just, I just wanted to make, have some time to go back to and, and make sure that the calculations. Support with the conclusions, I went through the conclusions. Are, are what they are, and you, you heard Mr. Ingram, uh, testify again as to what those are. Uh, just to look at what, how they, how they were arrived to that, to make sure in fact, that, that's, they in fact achieved those results. So, um, you know, in that regard, again, I, I don't see. How they, how they could reasonably expand this system much larger than they have it without going under the building. Because they are dealing with, you know, they, they, they are doing a minimal slope on a very small pipe coming up from Main Street. Uh, they are putting, um, basically the minimum cover over the tops of these pipes at a point in the property where they have the. High enough grade to be able to accommodate that, so. I, I don't know they could do much more in the way of storage. Um, you know, whether, um, but the judgment call here is whether, you know. It, it, it's, it's a judgment call. Uh, again, it's not, it's not a hard and fast answer.
I, I appreciate that, I'm not necessarily looking for, uh, you know, a hard or fast answer, just your opinion.
Yeah, we, I mean, we are. I, I believe we are looking at a, uh, uh, I think we are looking at an increase in runoff. Only because what's out there is not really a connected system. I think that the water is going to concentrate faster here on this particular setup than what it would be existing. Um, I do think that, um, I do know that where we're connecting on Main Street, it's probably. The worst point you can connect, because there is, it's kind of a high point in the street, and there really is no storm drainage, no piping system to connect to. Those trench drains, I'm not sure how they got there, I believe they had been there before the borough did the Main Street project, but. Irrespective, they're relatively small, they're small channels, we are seeing under very small channel drains, there's one on either side of the property. Uh, it's really inadequate connection, um. Ideally, again, if you had the ability to, to remove and replace sidewalk on Main Street, you could make that a little bit. Improved situation by putting something up that more of the size of the trench drain they're going to put on their property to go out to the gutter. Uh, but it's going to be a restricted point, and there, again, they're, they're doing what they can to, uh, live with that particular restriction. If they had an ability to do something else going out the back, as I said, um, down the Court Street, I would certainly. Encourage the board to, you know, to, if they, if they're using the, the back easement for water and sewer utility purposes. We strongly suggest the board also, I think, require them to do that for stormwater purposes, if that came to fruition.
So if, um, if, so Bob, if there were restrictions to, um, uh, on, you know. If our resolution included, um, restrictions that required them to, um, connect out the back. That would be more, um. You'd be more comfortable with that?
Well, I cannot defer to Kara, the testimony you've heard up to this point is that the easement they have, they don't necessarily, it's not clear that that easement allows them to do that.
I understand that, but, um, we can still put that restriction in place.
Uh, again, I'll defer to Kara on that, the, uh, my, my, my thought was that if. The applicant apparently is in some limited or initial degree of discussion with the county. For that limited purpose, I guess a fallback position, in the event they can't do the utility connections to Main Street, that. That might be a fallback position. If they were able to exercise that as a fallback position for utility connections, I would suggest. That the board insisted they also use that for stormwater purposes too.
Got it.
Right, but my, my fear, and this is where I saw Kara making a face a minute ago, is that. The testimony given suggests that there are not explicit rights for that easement for utilities. And so imposing that as a condition, we start getting into an area where we may not have that jurisdiction, certainly. Um, we can ask them to come back, right? If necessary, as, you know, in, in, in some way, and then we can. Follow it up there, maybe when we have some more clarity from the county as to particular languages of what rights may or may not be. Conveyed, because we can't compel the county to grant an easement for utilities, it's not within our jurisdiction. To have another property, tell another property owner to do that's not on the subject property.
It just seems like with this particular application over and over again. Um, we kind of run up against a wall of some sort. Some relating to others, some not, and it's very kind of last minute. For the last year, where we are forced to try to help an applicant get through the process. But. Uh, it kind of not willing to. Bring all of the testimony needed, you know, kind of to a conclusion and, uh, in a, in a clear way for us to make a decision, so I'm a little. Torn as to.
Kara's trying to jump in, I'm sorry Kara, go ahead.
Yeah, no, it's okay, I'm sorry Susan, I, I didn't mean to cut you off, um, I just thought it, it might just be helpful to kind of put this in context, um. We're reviewing the application before the board. And the application before the board is that. The, they are going to present a request to the council for boring underneath Main Street. Which is within the borough's discretion to review and either approve or deny. Um, we've also heard testimony that that rear building is going to be preserved. And that rear building is essentially what is precluding the use of that rear. Access, whether it's access for pedestrian or vehicular use, or, and/or utility and/or stormwater, we're not sure. Um, so that's what the board's voting on, and that's what's been presented. Um, I would say that, and Bob, you correct me if I'm wrong, but if that changes, and let's say. It becomes impossible, or, or un, uh, i- it's not approved for the boring under Main Street and the utilities, and the stormwater management would change to the extent that would be going out of the rear. Or in some other location, whatever the case may be. That would be something that you would want to approve, and in my opinion, from a legal perspective, would require an amended site plan application. So, let's look at what we have in front of us. If that changes, then an amended application would be necessary so that all of those different components could be properly reviewed.
Okay, so I guess my last question would be just back to Bob, so Bob, it is your opinion that, that the, the way it's designed right now. Assuming that they're allowed, uh, that the council would allow them to bore underneath the street against the, the, the current ordinance. It's, it's still your opinion that that's one of the worst locations to connect to along all of Main Street? Because of the, the, that is a high point. Is that, is that, did I understand that, your, your, your response correctly?
It's, it's a, a restricted location because there are, there is no storm drainage on Main Street, and it's a restricted. Connection because of the existing point they're utilizing for the connection. Ergo, because they cannot, or, or, or rip up the sidewalk, is a very restricted connection. So there's.
And they can't risk, and they can't rip up the sidewalk because of the Main Street improvement limitations on the bond.
That's what's on the record up to this point, yes.
Okay, it all ties together, it's just, uh, we need to take it all into consideration. Thank you.
Okay, other questions for Bob? Okay, so remind me, did we go through Beth's stuff last meeting, right? We went through that, I remember, I got that, okay. And we went through traffic last meeting, right? We, we, we went, Scott walked us through all that stuff, okay. Does, do any members of the board have any additional questions of our professionals?
I just have a real quick question for Scott. Um, Scott, did you get a chance to read Bob's revised? Uh, professional letter that he issued. Specifically the, the area about the parking with the, I'm looking right, I have to find it in his. Report here. Uh, it's. On page four.
Yes.
Um, B. Uh, one and two, there's, there's sub paragraphs there about parking. Uh, the last one where it says, the seventeen space required, uh, six point three. You can argue that you could round down to sixteen, um, for this use, twelve spaces required. Eight of which are basically, um, underneath the building, serving four apartments. Um, which only leaves three out there, one being a handicap space. And those sick, those, uh, those two, uh, spaces out there, out on the surface that aren't, uh, that are, that are. Basically up for whoever uses them, the, the commercial space, the office space, or the residence, uh, the two. Unlucky residents that don't have assigned spaces to them. In your opinion, is that? I- i- is, is that enough to serve this, this, um, design? Um, knowing that any residents that are not assigned permanent spaces will be walking, um, to their residence.
Uh, again, based on the testimony provided, our experience with these type of multifamily developments, especially. In the Main Street setting, is usually going to be one and a half vehicles per dwelling. I mean, and again, as I stated last time, it's, the tenants are going to understand the situation relative. Whether it's the access in and out, and the parking situation where they have tandem parking. I mean, I, there may be, I'm sure there's many people who would not want to have. You know, designated to, uh, the tandem parking spaces, but then again, it's no different than a townhome that has a one car garage and a driveway. And it's a similar type of situation, so. Again, it's a situation where, and I think, which is important, it's going to be. Uh, it's not transient activity, it's going to be the same people using the driveway and the parking spaces on a daily basis. And they're going to be, you know, make a decision whether this is something that is acceptable to them as to be a tenant, um. So, you know, what, what I, would I rent here? You know, that, that's a big question, but again, depending on supply and depending on what people are, um. Would be satisfactory to them, is, it's going to be up to whoever leases the space.
So what you're saying is that, um, they don't have to sign a lease, if they know that they're not necessarily have a guaranteed spot.
Well, hopefully they do. They do have homework, understand the, the aspects of their lease.
Yes, I, I understand, and I don't have an issue with tandem, I've, I've designed hundreds of units with tandem, so that's not my issue. My issue is just in general, if you feel like the area of Main Street, um, and the surrounding supporting. Uh, roads, namely Court and Park and, uh, maybe, um, Spring, we're close enough to serve any units that. Um, don't have assigned parking to them. Um, but what you're saying in the situation, you feel that it's appropriate, knowing that the tenant is the one who chooses to rent.
Right, and, and the occasion where they may have to have someone park offsite, and when the public lots. Is if one of the tenants has a, a visitor for a couple of days, I mean, but then again. Uh, I think they're all walkable, and it's reasonable for the environment that, uh, of this subject property.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Anybody else with questions for any of our experts? Professionals? Okay, uh, so this is where we would do board discussion. And I want to give everyone a chance to, um, speak their mind. Um, I, I, I do want to go around the horn, and I do know that, uh, both Caitlin and Tony are new, so I'm not going to. Put you on the spot, because you're, you're still getting up to speed, um, but everyone else, I want to give a chance to. To talk through what they're thinking about this, um, uh, and, and, and kind of, uh, have the conversation, I know we have, um. Usually we have, um. A break at around nine, um, it's ten of, I'd rather not break at, at this point, I'd rather us talk a little. Um, and to see where, see where things are at, so, um. Does anyone want to jump in first? Todd?
Thanks Jeff, oh, well, I could just, you know, looking back at my notes, I just want to make sure. That, you know, we can set the, the, the tone for what we need to be voting on. My notes say there are six variances needed, all of the C two nature. Uh, garage, um, and I'm going to go through my opinion, so, so give, allow me that, my soapbox. Uh, you know, um, they need a variance for a garage under a building, I have no problem with that, even though we don't set precedents. We have done that before, I think is an innovative use of space to lift the building and put parking underneath. I think it's crazy parking underneath here, so you can know where I'm going with this. Um, so that one thing, I don't think there's an issue with a garage under a building. Front yard setback, rear yard setback, pre-existing conditions, they're not going to move, um. Uh, for, uh, RSIS, yes, it's seventeen spaces needed, or sixteen, or fifteen, I mean, depending on how you round it, go up and down. Um, it's, but we got to those, or the applicant got to those spaces with. In my opinion, such an unorthodox use of stacked parking, and while I hear both Susan, who's designed it. And, uh, and Scott, who said that townhouses do have those tandem, many of our driveways are single driveways with a garage and a spot. But not four in a row, in my opinion, and not where you have to jockey in and out. Because I see my own neighbors moving a car in the morning out to the street, backing up, backing in, I was saying it's a big deal, right? Big, lots of people do it. I can't imagine more than one person having to do that at once in this space, because there's. There's two people backing out, there's no room for the car in the, in the courtyard, you got to go out to Main Street, I really don't know, I, I think the circulation is problematic. Um, impervious coverage, they have a slight reduction, I'm fine with that, uh, stormwater management, I understand. Building a curb, trying to get out, there's a lot of runoff there, bad space to connect, but. Sort of is what it is, uh, in, in my opinion, so they do have a lot that is. Small, seventy-five hundred square feet, give or take, um, atypical buildings on all four sides. And I do think that they need to seek variances from this board in order to build something. But I don't think this is appropriately scaled, a- and I'm only looking at this application that's in front of us. I think six apartments on this space, it's just, it's, it's egregious, in my opinion. Um, you know, I'd be much more apt to look at these variances that are intended to allow folks. Allow folks to get, get things because they are handicapped in some way from, from a. Or, or a minor technical requirement to, to get something, but I, I don't know how the circulation works. I, and I can't get past it. And if you guys can help me through it, but for me, it's. It all hinges upon those eight cars underneath the building and trying to jockey them in and out on a daily basis. Even though like Scott says, people know it, not a big fan of, uh, you know, caveat emptor than to say like, gee, make sure you look. Cause there's no place to park if you're in late. Um, so I don't know. I, I, I cannot get past the circulation. And the parking. And, and that's where I'm hung up on this. Spot. I, I don't even mind. I, I think the design is interesting. I think it's all innovative. I think they did a, a really good job at trying to. Make the most of their space. In my opinion, they went one floor too big. And it's sort of like they took a go big or go home mentality. And I just think, um, I, I just think it's too big. And, uh, and for me, you know, I know there was testimony given on, um. That this is less intense of a use in parking. It is. But not from an office. We don't have a parking problem on Main Street. I think we'll have a residential parking problem on Main Street. Should we keep continuing to add more residents on Main Street without proper parking? But, um. I don't think it's appropriately scaled for the space. Um, and that, and I'm hung up on, there's, there's nothing that says, is it appropriately scaled? But we are looking at a variance for parking, which could help make the case that it's not appropriately scaled. But everything else, Bob and I hear you on everything. Try to, and Susan, same thing. Try to go out the back. Try to grab the front. And a part of me is like, wow, that's what you guys all do. Yeah. Right. And, and, and boy, if we can make that work. Kudos to, to everybody. Uh, get a variance more under the sidewalk from the borough. But for me, it comes down to. Circulation and how much they're trying to get on this seventy-five hundred square foot property. And the only thing I have to hang my hat on is the RSIS parking standard.
Thank you, Todd. Um, other folks who want to weigh in? Don't make me call on people. Uh, Brian, go ahead.
I'll go. What the hell? Excuse me a second. All right. Yeah, I was wrestling with this, uh, you know, much the same way as trying to. You know, I feel like we're trying to, you know, squeeze a, you know, square peg and a round hole again. And, you know, a, a, all in all. I, I, I think we're there. I think we're pounded it in quite enough where we are. Fitting the, uh, the, the square peg in, into the round, uh, hole. The. The, uh, the question of the, the, the density or the intensity of use on the site. I, I, I think a good effort was made to. Eliminate. Uh, how dense it could have been in terms of, um, parking or the need for parking, additional parking. Structures or contraptions, uh, that could impact adjacent properties. At least we're keeping it to, uh, you know, s- surface parking. And or, you know, underneath, underneath the, the, the rear building. Uh, to the extent possible, I, anyone who's living here, it's not going to be, you're not going to be pulling in an F two fifty. In, in, into this parking lot. I mean, anyone who's seriously interested in this property, they're going to take a, I'm assuming they're looking, be looking at it and touring it. And see where they can park their car. And anyone who's has anything ba- bigger than a, a compact car is probably going to think twice. But that's up to the, the, that's up to the potential, the, the, the future tenants. In terms of the, the variance issues, I, I think we, we've beaten stormwater as much as we possibly can here. Into, in terms of the utility, that's another, uh, matter of how, how we're going to connect. And I've, I've some ideas how we can write up a, uh, a resolution or can get a condition to the resolution should we. Choose to approve it. So. I, it's, it's not perfect. It's not ideal, but I, I, I think the best effort was, was, was made for this. That's, that's my, that's my two cents.
Thanks, Brian. Uh, other folks who want to weigh in? Susan? You're muted. If you're talking.
Sorry. Okay. I think Todd and Brian both have had excellent, excellent comments. And yeah, we, we don't want to beat a dead horse. I don't necessarily think it's. Egregious, but I also don't think that we should. Just because we've. Kind of shoved the square peg in the round hole and, and forced that. I think we've done that responsibly and. I think we should still, um, hold the applicant's feet to the fire on specific things. Specifically, I. As I said before, I've designed literally hundreds of, of units with tandem spaces identical to this. I don't have a problem with the tandem spaces, but I think one, um, way of. Solving my issue with. The, the, uh, residential requirements of parking is to. Allow the requirements for. The commercial parking to be the kind of variance and require. Two of those surface spots outside of the eight tandems to be designated. For the residents so that essentially. There's only one spot that's available for people back there that's, um, not. A resident or a guest of a resident. Because I, I do agree with Todd and that. We need to make sure that the residential is parked within the. Parcel that the, um, residential development is proposed on. Especially in this site. I know that the applicant has argued over and over again. That these public lots are accessible to this area, but we all know that. Park and Court are not, um, streets that are, that have much parking at all. And the other, um, public parking is quite far away. Whereas if an office or even a retail is located in the front building. I know everybody in my husband's office. Parks several blocks away and walks to the office in the morning. I, I think it's more appropriate to ask. Non-residents to park and walk to their place of business rather than a residence. Especially because of the limitations on overnight parking on Main Street. So I would like to propose to add to the resolution requirements for those. For two of the surface spaces to be designated to residents. And if one of them happens to be a handicap. Resident, then that handicap space would perhaps go to that resident. I don't know how that would work with ADA. The other thing is a huge, I think the bigger concern of mine than the parking. Is this the, the issue with the Main Street improvements bond? I feel like we're, we're going to be kicking this to council and saying, hey, council, deal with this. We're not, you know. You know, this isn't our responsibility. I, I feel a lot of. Guilt of, uh, to kick that over to them. Um, I, I, I don't know. I guess it's the, the Catholic in me, but I, I just feel like. We need to make it clear what. You know, what we recommend at least to, to the council to do in this situation. And I'm, I'm really concerned. Uh, about that issue. So my, my concern is more the, the Main Street. Bonding and, and I would love to hear Mike's opinion in particular about this, since he's kind of so closely tied to that. Particular situation. I don't want to put Mike on the spot, but I'd really love to hear from him again.
Let's, let's be careful because we don't want to put testimony per se on the record, but we'll hear his.
I realize that, but he also can give his opinion at this time. So I'm not requiring, but I'm encouraging. My fellow board member to give their opinion. That's all I've got.
Okay. So, um, I'm, I'm going to give Mike a chance to decide if he wants to talk, but. The, the, the issue of the parking was, I, I want to just. I may say more, but I just want to weigh in on the parking just for half a second. In my mind. If we want to encourage walking on Main Street, if we want to encourage a con, you know, a shared parking analysis, if we want to encourage people. Shopping at stores. And we know that this will not be a lawyer's office forever and ever, that at some point it should revert back to some other active use. Where we have said that there's parking in other parts of town. And in fact, we want people to walk down Main Street. The way I see it is that. There's eleven spots being proposed on site and there are six apartments, six residential units being proposed. And in my mind, the eleven is probably adequate for the six. And knowing that. Some people will leave during the day to go to work and it will not be, you know, there's a shared parking kind of analysis, although we didn't really have. Terribly too much testimony about shared parking. We know from other experience in town that. The, the parking. Certainly can serve multiple, um, functions. And so if there is. Two or three, if there are two cars being used for the parking, you know, the, the surface parking and the. You know, not, and, and there's at least a couple of people at work, you know, I, I'm, I'm less concerned about. The fact that there were eleven spots on site for six residential units. I think that. It will work itself out. I'm not, I'm not as concerned about it as, as other folks are. I had some concerns about the circulation of, of, of the movement and I did ask those questions and I agree with you, Todd, that that. You know, shared drive with, uh, listen, I, I've, I had at one point, you know, four drivers on a shared driveway with two drivers next door. So, so we do a dance in my driveway with my next door neighbor, um, to get the cars in and around. So, so we do it in town. It's just, it's part of what Flemington's all about. Whether we would want to build that from scratch as opposed to just deal with it because it's the reality of a hundred year old, uh, town or well. Officially a hundred year old, but two hundred years of, of development, you know. Is a different question, right? Uh, so I, 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 I see, but I also see like. They're trying to get most, if not all of the residential parking covered on site, even though it doesn't meet our seventeen. Or sixteen, if you, well, seven, Beth's memo's got it right. It rounds to seventeen. Okay. So there's a, but there is the EV question. So. We'll give them the credit there. And, you know. In my mind then, because of the EV and the credit and the, I, I think they're there. I, I'm, it, it requires relief. It requires an ordinance. But I'm less worried about the, the total number of parking spots because of how we know Main Street functions. That the apart, having lived in an apartment above a storefront. For almost five years myself, when I first moved to town. You're not home during the day and the parking on the street, you know, we parked on Mine Street and it worked, you know, cause. And you walk a little bit. And when you've got groceries and a kid and a dog, it's a pain in the neck, but you deal with it because that's what just, you know. So I, I'm less worried about, you know, that, that particular piece of it. But these are all, these are all good points. The other piece that I just wanted to, just to weigh in on is the, um, Susan's concern about the utilities. And, and here's, here's where I am with the utilities. I raised it substantially a number of times. Um, and Kara said this just a minute ago. We are adjudicating the application in front of us. We have made it very clear to the applicant. That there's a challenge for them to get permission. And it's not council per se, it's the, it's, it's, it's the borough government. It's, it's a departmental and administrative decision of, 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 of another aspect of the borough. We've made it very clear to the, to the applicant that if they want to do what they are proposing with the routing of the utilities here. They need permission from the borough. We have made it very clear that that permission may not be forthcoming. We have made it very clear. What they need to prove and do to make that happen. And if they, um, do not get that permission from the borough. To disturb the improvement from the streetscape project or bore under main, if they don't get that permission, this thing can't get built. And they are going to move, if they, they decide to do that, they're not going to get their building permit. They're not going to be able to move forward. And that's, I don't think. I don't think we have abd- advocated our responsibilities as a planning board. In not making it very clear to them that this is what's in front of you. And we have given them ample opportunity to amend the proposal in front of us to, to route those utilities differently. We have suggested alternatives, um, that they have not chosen to put in front of us to consider. And so in my mind, they move forward at their own risk. And if they need to wait until a five-year moratorium expires. For, for touching the sidewalk in front of the property. That's their choice. If they can't get permission from, from the governing body on, on the boring under Main Street. That's in, that, we can't do any more than what we've done. I, I don't, I don't feel guilty. And maybe I'm Jewish, so it's, it's different, but like I, the, 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 um, I don't have the guilt about not us not. About an applicant not being made fully and completely aware of the challenges that might come with what they are proposing. We can't say yes or no about the, the, the boring under Main Street. It's not the planning board's jurisdiction to make that call. So. I think we've made it very clear to them that they, that they move forward at risk. Um, if that, if that's what they're proposing. And so if that's the case. I'm. You know, I'll sleep well, you know, if, 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 if that's, if that ends up being what happens. Again, I don't like being in a position where we're punting. To another body to make that call. I don't like, I like. I like, I like being the one who gets to say yes, you know, it's, and, and making it happen. So.
Neither do I. That's why my concern.
But, but I, I think this is where we're at. I think we've, we've given them opportunity to make revisions and submissions and ask questions and clarifications. And this is what we are. Is what we have in front of us. So tho- those are my two things on, that I, I just wanted to add to the discussion.
Can I make a suggestion that perhaps we? Take those words that you just said and add them to the resolution and that no work, no demo, no. No, uh, permit will be issued unless it's resolved. I don't want a cut glass to happen. Where we've got a half, you know, I don't want any construction work done until that issue is resolved. Because I don't want a half, you know, a construction site half done on a property.
I, I will tell you that, that Karen and I were talking about some draft conditions already anticipating, you know, this. And we, and, and I think that's, that's a reasonable. Condition to put in there that.
Building permit.
I'm going to read from, from the draft, Karen, if you don't mind. This is just, uh. Some, but you know, potential language. Applicant shall comply with all provision of the BURDA ordinances and facilitating the development approved by the application. Including but not limited to section ten dash one dot fourteen concerning tunneling or trenchless technology and shall obtain any and all approval of the borough mayor and council. As required there relative thereto. They can't get their, they can't pull their building permits until they've satisfied a condition.
To Susan's, to Susan's point, we can, we can, if, if this is the direction the borough, the board's going in, we could certainly make that. Perfectly clear that that approval, like any other approval, uh, you know, county approval, uh, you know, uh, soil conservation. Any, anything else you would typically need for a development, that approval needs to be in place prior to making an application for a building. So we can lump that into that, that general approval condition language.
Yeah, I just think that, you know, I did, of course, as you know, Jeff, I did read that, that, those, um, conditions. When Kara sent them on Sunday as well. And I just think that that wording needs to be. Stressed and beefed up a little bit is all I'm, all I'm saying.
Okay. I want, I want to give other folks a chance to weigh in. If Mike or Karen or Hannah or Trent want, or Jim wants to say anything, please feel free to, to jump in. Or Caitlin or Tony, but you know, I'm not. Or the mayor. Don't mean to leave you out, mayor. Sorry.
Oops.
I feel like, I feel like it's, I feel like it's the, um, what was the show? Well, New York growing up, it was, it was Romper Room, like with the magic mirror and you got to see, you know, you call people.
Yes, I remember that shit. Nineteen seventies.
Yeah, I'm going to jump in here. You know, I, I, I agree with Jeff on the parking that, you know, as we do strive. To create a walkable town. I think it's incumbent upon us on many levels to be a little less focused, on car focused. To create a walkable town, I think it's incumbent upon us on many levels to be a little less focused on car focused. Granted, we don't have transportation, we don't have public transportation, and I recognize that, well, we have the lake, but. And I recognize that, but you have to start somewhere, and I don't know. That. The parking is as big of a hang up with the six apartments and the eleven spots and the eight spots underneath. You know, I'll keep my opinion to myself as to whether or not I would rent there, given the parking limitations. But I don't think it's that big of a deal, I am still remain concerned about. The the utilities and whether it's under the sidewalk. Or how that's gonna happen, and I would encourage the applicant to strongly encourage to find another way to. Get the poop out of the property. For lack of a better term, but it's really what we're talking about. And figure that out because there is no guarantee that, you know, another engineer and I. I know regardless of what the previous borough engineer said, it's irrelevant. It's really the only opinion that's gonna count is the current engineer when this comes before council. And council asks that engineer to come in and guide. And help us make that decision. And there is no guarantee that that would happen. And so that's kind of my hang up, I would, you know, with the resolution, should it pass? That that be very strongly encouraged. That you've really got to find another way for those utilities, and if it means coming back for a site plan amendment, then so be it. Or you come back and fi- in whenever that moratorium, as Jeff puts it, you come back when that moratorium expires. I don't know at what point that is, I don't know if that clock starts ticking when we're reimbursed, or if it was when the final cement was poured. And I'm sorry, I don't know that the answer to that question. But I am, I am pleased that the applicant. Did react. Kind of in real time to some of the concerns we had previously, particularly some of my concerns with the stormwater. I I read Bob's notes several times as I was considering it. And do recognize that there are some site plan limitations, you know, we're not building. A new neighborhood here, where, you know, it's adaptive reuse, and sometimes you kind of have, we have to kind of go with that flow and. As to what's going to work, and I am pleased that the applicant has made those accommodations at several levels of. Concerns I personally had, and so. There's that, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mayor. Cara, just as a, as a legal question, if I could. Would rerouting of utilities trigger an amendment site plan, or is that something that's a field visit, field change?
I think, well, I guess the first question to Bob would be, is that something that he would want to review? In my mind, it's not just going to be as simple as. The utilities were going to be located along this line under Main Street, and once they got out there, they realized that there was an impediment, so it needed to be moved. Two feet to the left. Everything else being the same, and the remainder of the development staying the same, I I I would gather that this would involve. Other site changes that were part and parcel of the site plan approval. Because I don't think you'd be able to. Make this type of significant utility change we're talking about without changing other aspects of the approval, so without seeing it. I I would say yes. But if and when we actually get there, that's something we'd have to take a look at, but my 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 gut tells me that probably ninety nine point nine percent, yes, we would require amended site plan approval. Because of what Bob would need to review. And presumably the other plan changes that would be. That would result from the relocating of the utilities.
Okay, yeah, cuz I'm sorry, Bob, good.
I would say yes, for everything that Cara just said. Definitively, I would say yes, because it's gonna involve another property.
Um, hey, Karen, then that brings up another question I have, and maybe I don't know Bob or Cara, who this would be, so. If there's a condition that they explore all other options for those utilities. And then they come before they come to Borough Council and. The borough governing body for approval on the, on any boring or tunneling or what have you. Is it able to be required that they? Prove that they made. A concerted effort, a good, strong effort to try to work with the county to try and bring those utilities out the backside through that county easement.
I, I'm concerned that we may be overreaching with that type of a condition. Again, we're looking at the application that's been presented, we've been told that that is not an option currently based upon what. The easement specifically says, yes, it doesn't specifically prohibit. But the applicant has not made any headway in that regard. As far as what the. Governing body would be looking at in order to make a determination as to whether to grant that relief. That's a separate issue. But as far as a condition on this application to explore those other options. I'd be concerned that it's it's more overreaching than than we would be allowed to do.
But we could require as a condition then, from what you're saying, Cara, not right now, but we could say. In tied to what you have here in the draft, I guess it's number twenty one about, you know, section ten, one dot fourteen. We could say that if utilities need to be rerouted. They have to come back to the board for amended side plan.
That I'm comfortable with, yes.
Now, we can say, okay, so I think that that would solve that concern of. Of that, okay.
To Bob's point, certainly, if it was something that was gonna involve another parcel of property. Then it would need to come back to this board because it would need to be incorporated into the application, but. Even if it was relocated in a different way, again. Assuming that it would affect other aspects of the development, even if it was all completely on site. I think it would be something that the board would need to review and and as an amended application.
Right, so obviously, like, the applicant engineer gave testimony today saying, like. If they, you know, when they actually get the exact location of the sewer lateral on the property adjacent to the north, and they need to move. You know, a foot south. You know, and swap a water in a sewer line because of buffering between those things, like, that's a field change. It happens all the time, right? We're talking about if anything substantively changes from what is drawn on the plan.
Can I make a suggestion, cuz I can see where the mayor was going with that? What if we, on that, probably on that same resolution number, part of twenty one? Can we put in the resolution that? Included in their presentation to the governing body. That they should include a a report of. You know, all research done to avoid. You know. Their proposal to connect to me.
I think it's a jurisdictional problem, I don't think we're allowed to tell them what they can have to do.
Request that before, and I think that the government probably would request that. The borough engineer would request that outside of here before any additional, before any resolution would be voted on.
Yeah, so the applicants are, is is hearing from us right now, so they're getting the point. The council is gonna be asking these questions, so we don't have to tell them to ask these questions.
Lost Trent, and I see him, he's in the attendees, but.
Thank you, Mayor. Apologize. Okay, good, I am, I am cognizant of the fact that we've ran over on what was, is our normal break, but that's, I'm I'm using my discretion here, just a smidgen. I wanna make, I wanted us, what actually what I'd like for us to do is. I know this is gonna sound a little unorthodox, but. What I'd like is, if anyone else wishes to speak, speak now. I would then like to take a break to give Cara a moment to kind of organize. Our discussion and then kind of get all the conditions that we're talking about a little bit organized, then we came back after break. We could talk, we could then like list all, any conditions that we've been talking about, and then proceed to a vote, is that, does that sound reasonable to folks? Make sense? Okay.
Yeah, especially, especially Cara, how, whatever, however Susan was wording the parking, cuz I'm not there yet, I don't. I I, this is putting people on Mine Street and Court Street. And I wish there were neighbors that were were on this call that would say, listen, you've got four people. Probably four people, I'm not, again, we're, and I don't think we're splitting hairs when you think of the size of Court Street. And the the amount of parking issues that happen over on Mine Street, but. But saying that they're all residential and they're eleven, and even if you don't have an electric car, you could park in the electric car space and. Because it's not eleven spaces, right, because two are tied together, so it's really more like six spaces. Because you can't split the ones under the house, under the house, so. And I'm just trying not to put more cars onto Court Street and Mine Street, which I think is, I I'm, I watch people park there now. It's like a first come, first served, and so, but I'd be really curious what Susan was saying, if we could somehow write that up, I don't know how you do that. That says they're all for the residents. But that's a, that's a little bit better, I guess, so. To what, to what the mayor said, but I didn't think a walkable Main Street. Meant that you park your car with your groceries in the county lot behind the courthouse and walk four blocks to your apartment. I, I think what happens then is they park, people park illegally, and we'll have people parking in the new. Proposed parking across the street that's not meant for this site, and we'll have people parking along Spring Street, which is not meant for this site. Even though they're public streets, but we took such care, or this board took such care, I recused myself on the. Last application that's gonna put more cars on the Spring Street when that parking got made smaller, so. But maybe, Cara, if there was some way to word that. Maybe, maybe that would be a good thing for me.
I agree in the fact that it's easier for the commercial side to park, and that's where we would want more of the the walkability. And and, yeah, like exactly what Susan and you're saying, Todd, and that, making it more residential and focusing on that. And then that just makes it easier for tenants to wanna live there as well for him, I think, also having that availability.
With with, in such a way that. You don't have somebody go back there and park, so Cara, good luck with that.
I do wanna note that the the state, the the number, the number of units when they made them smaller, they also made. Two bedroom units, but I think this particular site will attract. Singles and people without families, so I don't necessarily think you're gonna have. You know, two bedrooms, two cars per unit, twelve. You know, spaces, I do think that the tandem spaces are one per unit. And then two other surface spaces would cover the six units in the complex, and yeah, I I completely agree with Hannah. That commercial and office shouldn't necessarily. Be guaranteed to park on site where residential should be deferred to.
And I mean, if anything, it's easier for commercial to be the tandem because they're the ones with a more. Oh, you know, regulated schedule, so that like, you know, who you know someone's gonna be there to open at eight, or you know, that's the person that parks in the back. But that's just also just kind of thoughts in my head, too.
That's, and it's a good point, Hannah, because the other, the other piece of that is the, if if this is no longer a law office. Just don't forget, part of what we're envisioning is this site's use. Under any permitted use in the DB, so let's say there's a coffee shop that goes in, just. Something. Under Borough Ordinance, they're not required to have any onsite parking if it's a restaurant or retail, right, so. So that, you know, that that's where I'm coming from, like, not, not, not saying that it's not a law office right now, and it's not gonna stay a law, stay a law office for a little while. But knowing that long term, the site has to function with other permitted uses in the DB, and in fact. If I'm thinking of our preferred uses on the ground floor and the DB of restaurants and retails and active uses. Then I'm led, that's where, that's why I'm less concerned maybe than Todd is, the, in terms of, because I I, in my mind. The on, the on lot parking is gonna essentially be for the residents. You know, it it just, so it's gonna function, whether or not we can figure out language to put it as a condition on on the resolution, I'm gonna see if Cara can be creative there. But that's, in my mind, I think that's how it's gonna, I think it's, I think a lot of things gonna work, you know.
Needs a well orchestrated, like I said, you know, doing the dance with. Six families back there and potential for even six cars, it's not a lot, right, it's a, it's four tandem spaces. And two others, so.
Okay, any, any other folks wanna weigh in? Okay, so we're gonna take a short break, it is seven twenty seven, I'm gonna bring us back in at nine, I'm sorry, nine twenty seven, we're gonna come back in at nine thirty five. I'm gonna give you seven minutes.
Okay, Jeff, when we come back, I think that probably the best thing to do is if you'd like me to. Outline the conditions that have been established based upon the discussions, and then based upon that, someone can make a motion, whatever that motion may be. To approve, deny, incorporate some, incorporate all, however it is, we'd like to do that.
That's what I'm thinking. All right, so I'm gonna pause the recording, and we will be back at nine thirty five. Eileen, for the record, if you could just recall the roll, just to make sure we've got everybody back.
Or Mayor Driver? Ms. Giles McCormick?
I don't see Caitlin back yet.
Mr. Champion? Mrs. Inglour?
She's here, I see her sitting there.
Yeah. Mr. Dasha?
Yes.
The Cook?
Here.
Mr. Budney?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
I don't see him back yet.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Ms. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Clerica?
Uh, yeah, here.
Ms. McManus? And Mr. Kennel?
Caitlin, are you back?
Yeah, if the newbies don't know how strict you are when you say nine thirty.
Not for nothing, it's nine thirty seven at this plate, I I was giving them some time here. Sorry, we'll, we'll get the new folks acculturated to our Zoom times. All right, so when they get back on Eileen, we'll, we'll, we'll note in the minutes, if we could, all right, I'm gonna. I I will say that there was some discussion about.
I'm sorry, Jeff, not to interrupt, but I do see a raised hand.
That's where I was going.
Oh, sorry.
We're gonna, I'm gonna let Mr. Roth speak for just a second here. About parking. So you should be able to speak, like, go ahead.
Okay, obviously, I am able to hear what you're saying. I am the only one in the law office. And we have never had our clients pack parking in the back. So I don't have any big problem if you wanna say the parking. In the courtyard and under the back building is for the residential tenants. So that's one point I would make, if that gives some of you some comfort. The second one I would wanna make is if we. Are unable to work out the utilities as the plan is proposed. And are required to go to the alternate to try to work out with the county, putting the utilities out the back. We'd be willing to do that. I would hope we would not have to come back for a formal hearing. But that you would turn that over to your engineer, because I think. Changing the utilities is simply a technical matter and not a policy matter. It's simply a matter of getting the same utilities in a different way. And I have seen some boards. Condition approvals based on various. Professionals of the board approving the change that is made, so I would ask you to entertain that. As a possibility as you write any conditions of approval, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. I I will note for the record, Mr. Parker came back at about nine thirty nine, if you wanna put that on there, Caitlin, are you back yet? No dice, all right. Yeah, she is, yes, she is, all right. Yeah, she is. Yes, she is. All right, good. All right, so we'll forever mark her back there as well. Um. So um so I I think that that helps us. So as as we're going to uh proceed, Kara, if you could. Um as you suggested, walk through. Conditions um of any approval that would be granted, um and then we're gonna. And we'll take it from there. Okay.
Okay, um I'll try to go slow. Um this is really in no particular order. Um other than how they happen to come up during discussion and testimony. Um if anybody has any questions, wants me to stop, clarify anything, please let me know. So here's what I have, uh again, based upon my notes, testimony and and the discussions. Um the applicant shall install and utilize materials as represented during the testimony. And on exhibits A three and A four. The applicant shall comply with all comments within the review letters of the court engineer. Traffic engineer, sewer sewer superintendent. And the fire marshal, except as otherwise set forth or amended herein. The applicant shall clarify or modify the second parking turning exhibit relative to exiting. Southernmost exterior parking space. Now, that may have been something that was addressed by way of exhibit eleven that was submitted, revised site plans. Um I do know that the next one that I have here. Um I understand was so if any of these have already been addressed by the revised site plan, obviously. It's already been addressed, we could check it off. Um but the next one I had was the applicant shall amend the plans. To incorporate the trip generation information outlined by the board traffic engineer in his review letter. The applicant shall revise the site distance and turning exhibit plan. Engineering site plan page six of nine. To reflect the Ash tow intersection site distance requirement of three hundred thirty five feet. For a design speed of thirty miles per hour for passenger cars under case B one. Left turn from stop. As indicated in comment nine of the board traffic engineers review letter. All commercial and resident, well, okay, this is going to change a bit. Um all resident, all. All onsite parking spaces shall be assigned. By the landlord to the residential uses. Shall be assigned by the landlord. To the residential uses and referenced in the tenant leases. The applicant shall reduce the onsite lighting. And this I have is as open, I'm looking for a little bit of input uh to security levels specifically. If there's a certain uh level that you'd like to reference there. And or employ the use of timers and or motion sensors to activate the lights after hours.
Beth, did you have a specific recommendation on that?
Were the after for the hours of lighting?
Yeah, the 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 this was on 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 number seven.
Yeah, I I don't think that I, so I'm happy to provide a provide a recommendation, but I don't think that's something that came out during testimony. In terms of after hours illumination, it doesn't make sense to me that we would have illumination in the parking lot. During the evening. For set times over, and I say that because if the parking is not going to be reserved for commercial use, instead it's going to be for a residential use. We don't have to tie, we typically tie lighting hours to the hours of operations for the commercial use, but that just doesn't seem applicable. So it seems to me that what we really need on this property is just security lighting as opposed to. Uh you know, minimum foot candles until, say, ten o'clock when the when the store would close. So I recommend that um security lighting or motion light or motion, motion lighting. I would say security lighting more likely uh is a better alternative. Uh is what ought to be used with a particular uh as opposed to uh certain hours. That would be.
Okay, so so what we could do is I had the applicant shall reduce the onsite lighting to security levels. And I had specifically, so forget the specifically, just to security levels. Uh and or employ the use of motion sensors.
Yes, and why don't we put that to the uh. Uh with the review and approval by the board engineer and board planner.
Yep. Uh the applicant shall install light fixtures with a color temperature of not greater than three thousand degrees Kelvin. This is something that was in the board planner's report. Um a detail of said fixtures shall be added to the site plan and subject to approval by the board engineer and board planner. Number of these are going to be subject to that same review and and site plan amendment. Uh the applicant shall work with the board planner to select appropriate landscaping and ground cover for installation. The landscaping plans will be amended accordingly and subject to review and approval by the board planner. The applicant shall revise the plans to depict bollards by the trash enclosures enclosures. To prevent damage by vehicles. A detail of that will be added to the plan and again, subject to approval by board engineer and planner. The applicant shall maintain the use of the mirror on the telephone pole. Which provides visibility of pedestrians on the sidewalk to motorists exiting the site. Um and this I had a couple of options here based upon how the board's discussion went. The applicant shall install, I had planters, striping, pavement marking, mirrors. Or to decide. At the end of the driveway adjacent to the sidewalk in order to alert and direct pedestrians away from the driveway. Details of the of the features added to the site plan and subject to approval by board engineer and planner.
I think we have included the 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 box has already been added to the plan right now.
And that's what I was just going to say. So I think that exhibit eleven addresses that. Um and we will just all reference a planter. And we'll just indicate that the revised plans have already addressed that issue. And the only thing I would add is that the applicant shall obtain the approval of the governing body is necessary for any such installation. Depending on exactly where that's located. The applicant shall provide details of all accessory structures, specifically the trash enclosures. Prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for either the commercial or the residential portion of the development. The applicant shall have a contract in place with a snow hauler for immediate use. In the event that the snow melt system does not operate as intended. And or cannot handle a particular snowfall. The applicant shall submit the contract to the board uh engineer and planner. Uh board professionals in general and the attorney for review and approval prior to execution. The applicant shall comply with all ADA requirements applicable to the development. If the applicant, now these are some things we've been discussing tonight, so. If the applicant disturbs the sidewalk adjacent to the borough right of way. So this would be outside, there was discussion outside of, let's call it the streetscape project. The applicant shall replace all disturbed areas. And areas affected by the disturbance as necessary at current grade to the satisfaction of the borough engineer. And again, but subject to any conditions in the resolution regarding the streetscape project. So that will be a separate item.
That that one's already on the plan.
It is, okay. All right, so on exhibit eleven, okay. The applicant shall have a contract in place with a garbage and recycling hauler for immediate use in the event that the borough pickups are insufficient. Uh there was discussion that they are going to utilize borough um garbage and recycling. They would have to utilize the ninety six gallon cans that's required by the borough. But in the event that it proves to be insufficient, they will have a contract in place uh with a hauler that they can immediately utilize.
Kara, can I jump in on that? A modification on that one, please? Um somebody uh applicant must uh. Provide, I don't know, some kind of evidence that somebody's going to take those cans in and more importantly, take them back up the alleyway.
How about the applicant will ensure that the garbage recycling receptacles are properly and timely placed at the street. For pickup and return to the enclosures after pickup in accordance with all requirements, the borough ordinances.
Perfect.
But if, but let me just, the I want to be careful here, Kara, because in the borough resident, the residents. The borough provides residential trash and recycling, but not commercial. So there we, I want to be very clear, I don't want the tenant. Of that office or commercial space to be using the borough trash when that's not what. Other businesses on Main Street get to do.
Okay.
Businesses on Main Street have to provide their own hall. Residents, it's paid for by taxes. So I don't want any. We have to make sure the language is very clear, that commercial uses have to have private hauling. Separate than the borough for residential.
Okay, for the residential use, commercial. Shall employ. Separate.
And 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 look, a law office doesn't generate terribly too much. I'm not worried about that, but I'm anticipating. Any potential future approved use on the ground level, particularly restaurant or retail where there may be a whole a whole lot more trash. Want to make sure that that it's clear that they have, they have to comport with the rest of the rules for the borough.
That's fine. I'll put that in there as well.
Trash and recycling, make sure we.
Yep, yep. Garbage and recycling. The applicant shall situate the columns in the parking area in locations that will not restrict adequate movement of the vehicles. The location of the columns are subject to review and approval by the borough engineer and by the board engineer and the board traffic engineer.
I I sent this uh comment earlier. I don't know why we even have that requirement in there. I mean. The cones are. Structural and they're going to be located. Where appropriate to support the building and to and to, you know. Provide in and out access for the. Cars. I just, I don't know why we're even putting that in our resolution. It it doesn't make sense to me. But I I don't remember why it's there to begin with, uh you know, from from the last meeting, if anybody remembers. I just think it's overkill.
And and it it may be, and if if the board's comfortable and and Bob and and Scott and Beth are comfortable. Um I hear what you're saying. It's they serve a structural purpose. And obviously, from a practical perspective, they don't want to put them in a place where it's going to be difficult. Uh for someone.
They're not going to place them in a place where they can't get the cars in and out. That's not the way a building is designed.
And we already had testimony on the record as to where those columns existed. It's on the plan.
Yeah.
I think it came from a question I was asking about cars trying to jock around in there with those.
Yeah, and that was a fine question. I just don't think it needs to be in the resolution. It's on the plans already.
Um, the applicant shall comply with any and all requirements of the streetscape project. Including but not limited to the terms and conditions of any financing received relative thereto. Um I will note for the record that to date, we've received a number of different document. Documents regarding the streetscape project, um one of which was an amendment. To what seems to be the overall agreement, for lack of a better word. The underlying agreement, we still need to locate. So that's that's something that we're going to have to work on sooner rather than later, because that's a very important part of this approval. Uh should the board approve the the application? And we're going to have to know, everyone will need to know exactly what those requirements are. Uh the applicant shall comply with or obtain a waiver from. All provisions of the borough ordinances in facilitating the development approved by the application. Including but not limited to section ten dash one point one four. Concern concerning tunneling or trenchless technology. And shall obtain any and all approval of the mayor, borough mayor and council required relative thereto. Uh no building permit shall be issued until this condition is satisfied. Uh along with any and all other outside agency. Uh there was a discussion and I'll address this now. Amendment application if. Utilities moved. I would submit to the board that we have no choice but to get an amended application if the utilities are going to go out the rear. Um that property was not included as part and parcel of the application. Uh the notice was not provided within two hundred feet of that property. Um so as as much as the board may like to make this an administrative issue. Um if that's how it's going to go, I I don't see that being an option. So I I would recommend that any amendments to those utility locations uh require amended site plan.
If it if you're saying is a matter of law that it would trigger site amendment to the site plan, then that's the end, that's the end of the conversation.
Correct.
My mind, like then they have to come back.
Correct. If the applicant is unable to, so this this goes to some of the discussions we've had. Bob made a couple of comments during his additional testimony comments. The applicant has represented to the board that the entirety. Of that rear building with the exception of the roof is going to remain. The foundation, the walls, the first floor, they're going to remove the roof and they're going to build atop that. And a lot of discussion was had about the circulation of the site. The ability to utilize that rear access easement, which of course is. Is 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 not available due to the location of the building. And again, the applicants represented that building is going to stay. So what I came up with. For consideration is if the applicant is unable to utilize the entirety of the existing rear building. Including but not limited to foundation and walls, but excluding the roof as represented to the board. The applicant shall be required to return to the board for amended site plan approval. That shall incorporate the use of the access easement at the rear of the property. As insufficient circulation ingress and egress were significant concerns of the board. When evaluating the relief request. At that time, of course, the applicant would be able to provide whatever information it has. From the county with regard to that access. But. The board may want to consider looking at the application. Because again, the application will change if that representation that that building is going to be retained. Um changes. But we won't know that until we actually get to it and. The representation has been made in testimony that all efforts are going to be taken in order to preserve that building. And if that's the case, then we don't have any issue.
So you're saying, I want to be very clear. So what you're saying is if they have to completely remove that rear building. Then the. The impediment to using the uh access easement. To put out to court street then goes away because they could reconstruct anything onsite. And that would give us the potential to to improve circulation onsite. So you're saying, okay, so so the the language here is the idea is if they. If they keep the building or most of the building as it's been proposed. Leave, you know, it is what it is, but if they have to tear the whole thing down. Then they got to come back because it would present us with the opportunity to utilize that access easement.
And I I don't have the whole thing as the language. I have if the applicant is unable to utilize. The entirety of the existing rear building. As represented to the board, and that's what's been represented. Um it was not represented that, let's say, there was some discussion. As to whether or not that rear building was, when it was used as a garage, if it was used as a garage, if it had a. A door access in that one side that was adjacent to the access easement. Um so if that's portion of the building, for some reason, it's probably not even. Possible from an architectural or structural perspective, but let's say that portion of the building needed to be removed. Um and and that would affect a number of different things. It would, it would affect obviously the. The size of the units, which would need to be changed if they were going to retain the rest of the building. Um and it would present that opportunity to take a look at that and also address the access. So again, if the use of that building and the retention of that building is not as presented to the board. And they're not utilizing the entirety of the building, which essentially was testified to mean everything but the roof. Then they have to come back to the board.
It's a maybe a little bit clarification on that. The the building has currently has two floors and a roof. They're planning to demolish the second floor and the roof. They're actually submitted a. I think it's sheet A oh five of this uh shows the both the the demo, the existing. Conditions and demo plan for the first floor and the only thing being demolished are internal walls within that building. So the exterior walls. And the floor of that structure will remain. That's what's being represented.
Okay, so exterior walls. And foundation.
The foundation walls and floor. That that's what's being represented.
Okay, so if the applicant is unable to utilize the exterior walls. And foundation walls and floor of structure as represented to the board, the applicant shall be required to return to the board for amended site plan.
Yeah.
Just to general, the plan shall be revised to depict all of the above planned amendments. The applicant shall work with Bob, that adjacent property owner that they're going to put the curbing along, is that southerly, westerly? Northern, there's a. With the adjacent property owner to the north. To see if they will agree to install a curb on their property. And along the foundation in order to direct water from the driveway of the subject property. The applicant shall agree to address any additional comments of the board engineer upon. Final review of the stormwater report. Is that still necessary, Bob? Do you still have some things you may?
Yeah, I I I still reviewed the details of it, so yes. As far as the curb on the adjoining property, that's not something that's gonna come back to the board. If they get the ability from permission from the owner to do it. Those just incorporate that into plan. Is that how you see it?
Yeah, I don't see that as, yeah, I don't see that as requiring a. Per se, because that was on, that property was included. So I I don't, I don't have an issue.
That's technically an improvement on the adjoining property. That's for the adjoining property.
It's still, it's still part of the resolution. It's still a part of the resolution, right?
I I think we should leave it in there because it was represented to the board.
Yeah, but in the event, in the event the owner doesn't want it, they're not obligated to do it.
We can't obligate them.
Right.
Right, I understand.
But 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 we want them to make sure that if it gets built, we want it on the plan. And you know, and 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 once we, and that goes with the same thing about like. Make sure that the final plan has the exact location of the sewer lateral, you know, depicted as, you know, in real condition. It's like, I think it all kind of goes together there.
Yeah.
Writing from the adjoining if he doesn't want the curbing.
That's a good, that's a good point. Because in general, you're supposed to control your own stormwater on your, you know. So if if you know it's already rolling over to the neighbor's property, it just makes sense.
Okay, and written consent or denial? Okay, that, um, Beth, refresh my memory where we left with affordable housing. There's no affordable housing obligation here.
That is correct. The applicant, the density proposed does not trigger the affordable housing set aside ordinance.
The applicant has agreed that, we said this before, all parking onsite will be residential, that's fine. No permanent construction till that's resolved. Again, all any and all other agency or entity approvals must be obtained before they can pull a building permit. Any significant changes to the location of utilities away from under Main Street would require amended site plan approval. And that's all I have, other than our standard payment of any and all escrow fees and any other. Fees required by statute.
So what I, so what I am looking for then. What would be appropriate is if someone wanted, if someone was so inclined to make a. Motion to grant approval, subject to the conditions that Kara laid out. Which includes variance relief for minimum front yard, minimum rear yard, maximum pervious surface coverage. And parking, and what's the sixth one that I'm missing?
There's the garage, the the additional offsite parking and as well as the stormwater management requirements.
Yeah. So that's, that's what's in front of us. If someone wants, if someone wanted to move this forward. To make a, to make a motion to grant approval, subject with those, that relief, subject to the conditions the Kara just went through. I'm sorry, say that, Jim.
I said they're all C variances.
Yes, they are all. Mayor wouldn't be here if it was a D variance. So someone want to move it?
Engelhardt moves.
Is there a second?
Budney seconds.
Okay. Is there, so we now have a motion, we have a second, and we actually do have an opportunity. Robert's rules and all, if anyone has any further discussion that they want to add. You're all strangely quiet. Okay. So that's where we're at, okay. Eileen, please call the roll.
Mrs. Engelhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Budney?
Yes.
Mayor Driver?
Yes.
Mr. Campion? Mr. Doshna?
Yes.
Mr. Cook? Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Okay, thank you all. All right, Mr. Roth, there we go. All right. I think we will, it's this, there's a lot of conditions and language here. I doubt that we'll have the resolution for the next meeting, but you might as well stick it on the agenda as a maybe, Eileen, but I think we're probably gonna. It might be an extra meeting there before Kara gets all that. Just exactly hammered out, but that's where we're at. Okay. We are up to. Chair items, yes? Okay, um, I've got a few things. I wanted to give Tony a chance to say hi to everyone. And introduce yourself and. Where did Tony go? There's Tony. And just for the, for those who don't know who you are, just, you know, say as much as you want to say.
Okay, great. Yeah, Tony Parker. I have been in Flemington for six years. Moved here from Montgomery Township with my husband. We've been married for about, well, six years as well. So, you know, it's really interesting. I'm listening to, obviously, I've got a lot to catch up on here. I've been trying to read and catch up with you. Get on you guys, same speed you guys are on. But what I find encouraging about Flemington and one of the reasons we, well, let me go back. We chose, Flemington kind of chose us. We didn't actually choose Flemington and I'll, I'll put it that way. And the reason is. We were actually on our way to Lambertville to look at some houses. And happened to come through Flemington and stopped on Church Street and at the light. And I said, you know, we've never been down this street. Let's just go down the street and see what what it's like and came upon this house. So, rest is history. So, but but what I did find. So what I did find encouraging about this is. You know, my career has been one of helping businesses grow. And understanding the 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 angst and. The growing pains and things that people don't think about and things like that. I look at Flemington somewhat of the same way. It's really, really encouraging to see how much has been done since we've been here. Talking to our neighbors. You know, just kind of walking around town and just seeing things happen slowly, but it's starting to happen and it's kind of like the little engine that click. Because you just know it's gonna get there, right? And so I'm encouraged to be a part of this. This board and be a part of making things happen in Flemington because I'm one of these people that believe and, you know, I've. Worked on and, you know, had conversations with Betsy and. Worked in on the hill for for some time in in another career. And I'm a firm believer that you either sit back and complain. Or you get involved to make things happen, right? And the easier thing is to sit back and complain, the harder thing is to make things happen. So I'm encouraged to be here. I. I look forward to working with you. I look forward to meeting you face to face. If I'm in the store or something and I don't recognize you, please forgive me because I'm looking at you on a Zoom, so. Just kind of stop me and say, hey. I, we're very much people, you know, we love people, we love entertaining. You will probably get invites as we get to know you. Betsy's been here. And so. Thank you, and we are honored to be a part of the community.
Thanks, Tony. It's an honor to have you here.
Wonderful. Um, I don't know if Caitlin wanted to say anything else. Or not. Now, okay. All right, so a couple of, a couple of housekeeping items under chair items before we wrap up. We have, I talked, I was talking to Susan earlier today. We really have only two committees. That need folks to be staffing on them. The, the, one of them is work on the master plan. Which I swear we are going to get done this year. But the, and so the standing committee hadn't worked on master plan stuff before was. Was Todd and Susan and Brian was working on some stuff, but I also know that Jim and Mike and Jay were working on the. And the parking stuff. So so we're gonna, you know, leave that, we're leaving that alone, but I'm gonna just say very clearly. Every single member of the board is gonna be involved at some aspect of the master plan work once we get there. So it might be on environmental and ecological issues. It might be on housing. It might be on. Circulation and traffic and parking. It might be, we are required under New Jersey law to have climate adaptability as part of our land use element like there's. We are gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna do all of it. So everyone's, everyone's gonna be doing something when it comes to master plan. So right now, I'm not changing per se. The composition of the committees who've been working on this already, but know that I'm gonna be reaching out to every single member of the board to find a space. Where it makes sense for you to get involved with the master plan work and that's. I really hope that that gets started within the next few weeks. We're gonna be able, we'll have hopefully approval from the county. For the grant funding that we want, we'll move the appropriate. Ordinance through council to get the the funding squared away and we'll be able to get going. That's my. It's really, because right now we've got a really good window. We know that on the, on the horizon, we've got Captiva and on the horizon, we have Liberty Village. And we might also have something at the Old Ag site as well. But we have a window right now, I think, to really get some work done on the, on the master plan stuff as well. So that's.
Can I interrupt you real quick on that too? As he, as he approached that master plan, as, and I know Jeff, you are at our council reorg. I'm gonna be requesting and we'll ask council to pass a resolution that extra special attention is paid to. Climate change and how our master plan can increase. Resiliency against climate change here in the borough. I think the past year with the two major flooding events that. Residents throughout this borough from corner to corner, north to southeast to west were affected by. That we have to address that and that's gonna really, I'm gonna be asking the planning board as, as you do that, to really, really pay close attention to them.
Absolutely. I think we, I think we all agree that that's, that's critical, that needs to get done. So that's master plan and so I I'm not necessarily making a change to that, but the other committee that we do need to staff up is the sign review committee and there is actually. An ordinance which defines who is on the side, the side, the sign review committee. So the way the ordinance is written, it is the. It's the chair of the planning board or their designee. It is the two other members of the planning board. It is the chair of the HPC and then someone from the FCP. And so last year. Dave Norton and Mark Kane were on that with Todd Cook as my designee. And we had, and and so HPC is not reorganized yet, so I don't know who the chair of the HPC is. I'm assuming it's gonna be the same folks, but we, you know, I just can't presume that just yet. And we also need the board of the FCP to tell us who they want their person to be. It has been the executive director in recent years and I don't see any reason why. It would not be Robin Lepidus again, but again, I I it's theirs to designate. Who that person is, but I do need, so I'm I'm very. You know, for the record, I am designating Todd Cook for two thousand and twenty-two to be the chairperson's. Designee for the, for the sign review committee. So that's on the record. I need two other folks who want to do it. Honestly, it is a straightforward, easy assignment to do. It's all digital, it's all.
All digital.
There's no meetings. There's, it's, it's, it's email kind of conversations and it's really anyone who, it's. It, it, there's, and there's only a narrow band of signs that get reviewed. It's stuff that deals with like the Main Street District and. You know, and 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 for folks who are not coming in for a major site plan. So like, if you remember. A few years ago, applications, say when Burger King came in and rehabbed the bank building there, just north of the big circle. They had a sign package that was part of their site plan. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about when a business, say. I don't know, the corner at the corner of, you know, to, because Dave's not here anymore, I can say that. When they can't, you know, they want to put a blade sign out front or facade sign. That's the stuff we're talking about. We're talking about review just to make sure. That sign, to provide a streamlined process for businesses to get a review, to make sure it's conforming with our rules, but it do, do so for, for a. Modest fee and to do it quickly without them having to come through a whole planning board process. We want to make it as easy as possible for them. So I need two people. Hannah says yes, Trent says yes, we are done, good. Todd, we have our people. All right.
Thank you. I really thank you so much for volunteering. We appreciate it.
Good, okay. And then other than that, we had over the years, other committees. At the moment, we don't need any of the rest of them right now. Rules are working out fine. HPC is working out fine at the moment. There's no issues there. There's no more census to do for another ten years. Like, there's nearly nothing else that we had. The borough website's working fine enough, like, there, there is nothing that we, that we have that that I saw that we needed to staff out. I reserve the right, obviously, as we go through the year, as things pop up, we will need other groups. I will tell you, for example. As we get through the master plan process, we need, we're gonna need a group to work specifically on like ordinances. So not just the stuff that comes out of master plan, but like, just list the stuff that we've been accumulating. Kara's got a list. Of stuff that we need to update the ordinance and to work with council on making those changes, things like our checklist, which still. On the books requires twenty-five hard copies of plans where we don't need twenty-five copies of hard plans and stuff like that. There's a whole bunch of those things that just need to get pulled together. I'm not making that ask tonight. That'll be down the road. Because we, we're not there yet. I wanna, quite honestly, for the sake of sanity, I would like, once we get through the master plan work. To go to council with one big list of all the ordinance stuff and have them adopt it in one fell swoop. I, it'll just be easier. To have, just get it all through in one shot, because I don't want to keep going back and forth and back and forth. Council's got enough on their agenda. If we just. Take a chunk of time and say, we're gonna put them all through, this is what we're gonna do. Like, there's, and some of it'll be big, like. We may decide certain zones don't make sense anymore, and we may, maybe needs a re, and we're gonna have to update our zoning map like that. There might be some big level stuff, but then there's also gonna be things like. We don't need twenty-five hard copies for site plan and application stuff, checklist items. We don't have a checklist for. Let's give you an example. We had a single family. Proposal with Padavani recently and there's no checklist for, for that application and it might be useful for an applicant. To have a short checklist so that they know what they have to give us and it's not just Bob, you know, and Beth trying to like. Sort of do a review letter, letter and the applicant not necessarily know what they want. Clarity for applicants is always helpful. For folks to know what we're asking for of them. There are little, there's like, there's, so there's, there's a range of stuff that we're gonna be coming through, but right now. I'm not at, making that ask because I also want y'all to like, think through like. What's on that list and we will have a moment this calendar year to, to get through that.
Can I add something to that, Jeff?
Yeah, please.
Jeff and I spoke earlier today and kind of prepped, prepped this. And he's gone through all the comments that we, we kind of put together. I thank you for that. The, earlier tonight, you all were distributed the summary that Eileen put together. And that's not just for, you know, her records. That's perfect for you guys to review. And kind of remind yourself what we did last year and it'll, it'll. Immediately remind you of, oh yeah, we had that issue with that particular application and. It'll, it, what Jeff is talking about is essentially. An ordinance implementation committee that we would, we would, you know. Have after the master plan's done and that little kind of reminder of. The summary from last year and even years before that will be very helpful to kind of. that will be very helpful to kind of refresh your memory on things that we want to get done, both small and large.
So I didn't get that actually. And I don't know.
Well, we need to get that to you then. I'm sorry.
There's a, no. So, so in the docket for the meeting is the 2021 Planning Zoning Board Annual Report. Can I ask a question, Kara? We don't need to adopt by, do we need to, by resolution, say that we have this report? Do I remember that correctly?
Yeah. What we actually need to do, the purpose of that report is that on an annual basis, you're going to take a look at that and see if based upon relief that's been granted, whether or not the board wants to make any recommendations to the governing body for ordinance changes. So for instance, if you had a lot of properties in the, you know, in a residential zone that was coming in for front yard setback variances, because it's 25 feet and everyone wants to come within five feet of, of the front yard setback, that may be a recommendation saying, listen, we granted 15 of these variances last year. The governing body may want to consider amending the ordinance because clearly this is something that needs to be done and it's a trend and it, it makes sense. So that's how we use that. So yes, we do need to adopt a resolution. Except, but what that resolution does is says, we took a look at everything and we make these recommendations or we have no recommendations to make at this time.
So what I would suggest then is we're going to put that on the agenda for our next meeting and everyone have a chance to review the annual report that Eileen put together for everybody. At first glance, I don't see anything glaring, but I want us to have, we'll have a space on the agenda, Eileen, if we could next, we, the next meeting for, for discussion and then we can transmit to council any recommendation that we might have.
Yeah, I also would recommend taking a look at your own personal notes. If you've taken any notes over the year, because that might trigger your memory as well.
And I think there was a resolution to adopt it, I think, last year.
Yeah, I think that's how we did it. Yeah. So it was, so, so we can put that, if we can just take last year's and little copy paste action, just to, just so, because we've got a template to use for, for that. So let's, we're going to put that on the agenda for the next meeting. The other, the other thing I want to, just to, for, for everyone's understanding, we had carried forward the, we had deemed Captiva complete. We had, they had tentatively set, I'm sorry, for our new folks, Captiva is the global Ag redevelopment project, the, the north part of that, the one that's not by Steve's, but the other, the other side of, of, of Main Street there, and Faran. We had tentatively put them on the schedule for our next meeting, but there was some substantial work that's been done since then. And I just want to make sure I got this right. Bob, we were thinking about putting them on for not February 8th, but February 22nd? Is that what I understood?
Yeah, that was, that, well, we haven't seen what they're doing, but apparently they're making changes in the layout to address the, I believe the Fire Marshal's comments.
Okay.
And I think it was that the first, the first meeting in February wasn't, they, they weren't available or something. That's why we pushed it to the second meeting. Somebody wasn't available that first.
No, no, we, we were, we were going to, we were going to put them on tentatively for January 25th, but now it sounds like there's more, that they're doing some work. And then there was a question of some work that wasn't going to get to Bob with enough time for review before.
Yeah.
Sorry.
They had indicated that they might have stuff to us by Friday or Monday, which is a holiday. So it'll be next Tuesday of next week. And I, I said, well, you know, if that's the case, it's going to be a little bit tight to try to do it for the first meeting in February. If, if that's what you're doing, then we really should consider, give consideration to make it your second meeting. Just to allow some time to review whatever.
So the, so if that's the case, then they have not noticed yet, right? Eileen, we haven't seen that yet.
That's correct. And just, we might want to reach out to them, Kara, and get an extension of time for the board to act until the end of February for that application, since it has been deemed complete.
Yep. Right. Because, because that, and we, we don't want to run into the clock on that. So, so yeah, we, so I would say if we could get, if we can get an extension through February and tell them to, and me notice for the February 22nd meeting, I think that would make the most sense. As it stands then, is there anything else on the agenda, Eileen, coming up for our next meeting in January that you know of?
Now, I did get a call from one law firm that is planning on submitting an application, but as you know, those things, you, you never know. Things can happen and their, their plans do not formalize. So I'm hesitant to even schedule them until they're submitted, you know, their application.
Okay. So we may have a quick meeting on the 25th. I am hopeful though, that by that point I'll have news on the grant and we might be actually, actually, we might be able to have some space for, for, for master plan stuff if, if the ducks are in a row, but I'm not sure. I have to check the count, the calendar for that. It may be a very short meeting on the 25th. I'm just putting that out there. And
Jeff?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I won't be here on the 25th. I'm on a plane.
Anyplace good?
Yeah, Florida. It's warmer than here.
I won't be here on, on February 8th either.
Okay. So, and just
I'm not calling any place warm because the Northern Lights don't take place anyplace.
Oh, jealous.
Yeah.
So just Tony, just so you, we know that we have, just as a practice, usually we kind of go around when we do share items. If folks know, if we know that folks aren't going to be able to be a particular meeting, just that we make sure that we've got quorum and everything that we know. If you know, something comes up, work or personal, whatever, just send Eileen a note, just so that she kind of keeps track as if somebody needs to miss a meeting. It's just kind of easy. We, we usually don't have a problem because we've got a full board of alternates, but sometimes these things happen.
Fair enough. I'll keep that in mind.
I have one announcement. I'm, I am pregnant. So sometime in April, I may have to be not here, but other than that, I'm here.
Oh, congratulations.
Exciting. Thank you. But yeah, I'm not, this is number two. So my announcements aren't very good these days, but.
Well, you just said it at a public meeting that's going to be free broadcast for a website. I mean, that's pretty
True. Hey, that's it, right? Hopefully I don't offend any other relatives right now, but yeah.
I gotta tell you, Tap into is going to write up a whole article now. They're desperate for column inches. Now, um, the, so that's a clickbaity article, you know? So, so wonderful. Okay. So, so yeah, that's, that's where that is. The last logistical thing I just wanted to hit on was, Eileen also distributed the directory to everybody. If you've got, just give yourself, give it a look over. Make sure that your name is spelled correctly, that you've got the right information on there. Obviously, everyone is using their borough emails for planning board business, but check the phone numbers. My home number isn't on there and I should probably put it on there.
Eileen, whatever. Getting your emails then, because I didn't get that email, email either.
It was with the agenda.
I don't think it was actually, Jeff, that might've been just to you. I didn't know, because I wanted to make sure that all the appointments were, were done. And I will send that out tomorrow for the
Okay.
For the 2022, because I didn't know who the chair was. I didn't know who the vice chair was. I didn't want to make presumptions prior to the reorg. And Tony, I think, I know that Bill Hanses was working on setting up your, your borough email. I tried it today and I, I will follow up with him tomorrow again. And it should be the borough email and once that gets set up, it'll be directly to that. And
Yeah.
Right?
So you'll let me know when that's set up? Someone will let me know? Okay.
Yeah. We'll get you an iPad too, one of very low budget iPads.
Yeah. And, and actually Dave Norton has an iPad that he told me when I was in the shop picking up my lovely poster. If you were lucky to get one of the prints, they're, 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 they're very nice. But there's a, he's, he's got, he knows he's got to bring his back. So, so we can get that back and cleaned up. And so they're, 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 any other housekeeping items?
Yeah. The yearly report was included in the email that was sent with the agenda and all of the, all of the planning board for all the new, for all the new members or re-up members on January 6th. So just so, yeah. And I, I will send you, I'll send you a list of things that I, you know, like, because you're voting on that, on that yearly report next week. I'll send you a kind of a summary of things that I have as far as my kind of short list of, of things we talked about last year as far as ordinance issues.
Okay, sounds good. That's everything on your chair items. Item 15 is the bills.
Jeff, Jeff, one more thing. I just want to acknowledge, I want to thank Dave Norton for his service because he is not, he, he stepped down last year. And I think we're going to be seeing a lot of him, you know, kind of downtown and interacting as a business owner. And I really want to thank him for his service. And I also want to thank Mark Kane for his service. He's been a longtime member of this planning board and definitely a workhorse. And I was really excited to see people step up and volunteer right away because we, we need work horses and, and Mark was one of them. And I want to thank him for all his years of service and, and that's it.
Yeah. I was gonna, I was gonna be the, take on the, the role of ex-chair because Mark, Mark sat next to me for about a decade. And there was, Susan, you know how many times we were in his dining room, master plan, bylaws, my goodness, a lot came out of Mark's office. So I thank him for all the help that he's given me over the years, almost a decade, half as liaison from council and half as a class four member. So thanks for bringing that up, Susan.
No problem. All right. Item 15 is audit the bills. Eileen said that out. Can I get a motion for the bills?
So move Cook to audit the bills?
Second Campion.
Any concerns or comments? Okay, Eileen?
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mayor Driver?
Yes.
Ms. Gaz McCormick?
Yes.
Mrs. Mrs. Inglehart?
Yes.
Mr. Doshna?
Yes.
Mr. Budney?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
And Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Thank you.
A professional reports. Bob, do you have anything?
Just that Beth and I were contacted by the project engineer for Spice Factory. Apparently the ownership has changed and they want to meet with us to go through what they need to do to meet the conditions of the approval. Apparently they want to proceed with the phase one part of the project.
What, remind us, what was phase one?
The existing building. Put the second floor, going on memory. I think it was putting just the, the upper floors on, on the existing building.
Okay.
It was like a mansard kind of roof.
Yeah.
The roof, it was cool looking up on top.
Very cool. Phase two was going to be the new building.
All right. Beth, do you have anything else other than that?
No, Bob stole my thunder on that report.
Scott, was there was anything from, from Jay in your firm or no? I'll put Scott on the spot. And Kara, did you have anything?
No, we don't have anything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kara's good. We don't need an executive session?
Yep.
All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Inglehart move. Budney second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposition? All right. Good night all. Thank you very much.
All right. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.